Which one is it?
There's blinds, isn't there? No?
Well, if it's coming through the door, no.
Are you live?
Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We are at the Chaska Event Center. Call the meeting to order at seven oh, seven, seven oh one. Um, and I have to read this statement here first before we start. Welcome, everyone. You might notice that this meeting looks a little bit different due to COVID nineteen pandemic. We are holding our meeting at the Chaska Event Center. Because the city council has declared a local emergency for COVID pandemic. State statutes allows us to hold our meetings remotely and with Zoom capabilities. We want to make sure that everyone can participate. If you have joined the meeting via Zoom, you will notice that you're muted. We have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, and special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by computer or tablet, please click on Participants at the bottom of your screen and then select Raise the Raise Your Hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name or phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed from the meeting. So, thank you. With that, will you stand and join me in pledging allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone, it's been a long time since I've heard that kind of a, uh, behind us hearing the Pledge of Allegiance. So it's very nice to hear that. Um, if you notice, uh, we are not wearing masks. Um, so mask is not needed unless you haven't been vaccinated or if you want and feel more comfortable with a mask, you're certainly welcome to wear it. At this time, on it, we call roll call, please.
It's Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Rules of item four, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five oh. All right, uh, now we have a proclamation in recognition of poppy days. Uh, and I have a, and if the ladies from the auxiliary want to come up, you are welcome to come on up. Good evening, guys. How are you? Good. I have a proclamation that I will, um, read here. Proclamation in recognition of the Chaska American Legion Auxiliary Unit Fifty-seven Poppy Days. Whereas the poppy as a memorial flower for the American war dead, war dead, is a tradition which began in years following the First World War. And whereas veterans returning to their homes in this country after World War One remembered the wild poppies that lined the devastated battlefields of France and Flanders Field. And whereas the poppy is a symbol of hope for all veterans who served this great country through military service. Whereas the Chaska American Legion Auxiliary Unit Fifty-seven adopted the poppy as a memorial flower and pay tribute to the war dead and aid the living veterans and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Chaska does hereby proclaim May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. I have the twenty-ninth, but I know you're only doing two days, right?
Eight and twenty-ninth.
Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. As poppy days and urge all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing a memorial poppy on these days. In witness whereof, I, I have set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska the seventeenth day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one. Take this off. And I'll bring you this. Can't get. Cut me off.
Go this way.
Have to go this way now. There you go. Put that in there. Don't lose it.
I won't lose it.
Thank you, you guys.
Do you want poppies up there?
I had one. They lost it.
Well, there you go. Hand them out. Give them to your friends.
Oh, they're gone here. I don't need them.
Oh, Karen's got you.
Karen's already got us covered. Karen, I got one.
Thank you very much.
And the ladies are still passing that out. I just got a couple of things that I want to add. Um, hang on, I gotta put this back on. Too much technology here. The first, uh, the first few weeks of May, there's a lot of, um, special days that, um, we should really recognize. Armed Forces Day was last Saturday. I believe it's the third Saturday of May every month. Uh, was created August thirty-first, nineteen forty-nine. Is the proper day to honor all the men and women currently serving as well as those who served and sacrificed to defend our freedom. It was designed to expand public understanding of the type of job is performed and the role of the military in the civilian life. We honor and offer our proud appreciation gratitude to the patriots for serving in our nation's Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Space Force, and Coast Guard. Their professionalism and unwavering dedication to supporting and defending our constitution has been vital in allowing our democracy to flourish, safeguarding peace and growing prosperity for our citizens and giving hope to the oppressed peoples or those facing tyranny abroad. Less than one percent of Americans serve on active duty in the armed forces. Those who do volunteer to put their lives on the line to protect our country and democracy wherever they may call to be served. Whether they are active duty National Guard or in the reserve, they are true American heroes and we all owe them. So I want to say thank you to anyone that's served. Also this week, um, the couple here closer to home, um, this past May second through the eighth was the fifty-second annual professional municipal clerks week. Uh, initiated in nineteen sixty-nine and endorsed by all members of the United States, Canada, and fifteen countries. This week is a time of celebration reflection on the importance of the clerk's office. Our city clerk, Diane Wetzelbebe, um, she's amazing, all the things she does. Um, preparing our council package, she watches over zoning and ordinances and advises if we're still current. And, but most importantly, uh, one of her main processes overseeing the election process. And I, I will say that we are very proud of that. We have done always a very good job in one of the first reporting cities um, that have turned in their stuff. So thank you to Denise. And, and, um, lastly, in a world where we're living today, I think it's important that we recognize some other individuals within our organization, our police officers and our firefighters. Just last week was National Police Week. It took place this year from May ninth through the fifteenth. And as observed across the country and as a way to honor local, state, federal law enforcement officers who have died or been disabled in the line of duty. Fortunate, we have not had a line of duty loss in our organization. May fourth was International Firefighters Day. It is a way to say thank you to the world's firefighters for all that they do to keep our community safe. This day of recognition is the core of what the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation does. Our mission is to honor and remember Americans' fallen firefighters, to assist their families in rebuilding their lives and to prevent firefighter injuries and deaths. So I would just say that we are very fortunate to have some pretty dedicated, uh, women and men that make up our police and fire departments. Thing that we have to remember is that these folks are, are, have a lot of different titles. They're problem solvers. They're the first person that gets called for anything. They're action and are risk takers. Fortunately, unfortunately, they enforce laws and codes. They're counselors to many. They're teachers and mentors. They can be a dad, mom to the people that they encounter. They apply medical aid. They're comforters and offer sympathy. Most are moms, dads, brothers, sisters, grandmas, and grandpas. Most firefighters are paid on call and that, what that means is, um, they're at home and they're paged to come to the station. They're human, just like you and I. And mostly, many are your friends and your neighbors. So as you can see, it takes some pretty special people to be a firefighter or a police officer. We are very fortunate to have the best. So I just want to say on behalf of the city of Chaska, I want to offer my sincere thank you for all that have served this country and especially to our city. So I'd like to thank all these groups and organizations for what they do. We kinda, we kinda miss these as we go through and then, uh, we don't have a meeting and we, so I, I just wanted to make sure that I thought it was important. Hey, did I know we have a long meeting, but I, again, I think it was important. So. All right, with that, we'll get back to, um, schedule. Um, next is six visitor presentation. Is there anyone here on their visitor presentation? Not an agenda item. Kevin, you got anybody, uh, online? Okay. All right, we'll skip visitor presentation. Uh, next we'll move to approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, previous meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Hubbard, sorry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve, uh, May third's meeting minutes. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries five oh. Next is item eight, consent items. These are all items that they're approved, but not necessarily, uh, conversation, but any and all can be brought forward if need be. So again, uh, if there are no corrections, additions, or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Grau.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Um, discussion. And I, I just have a question on HE. Is there, is there any benefit, uh, that separating that bridge from the road construction? Is it, is that a better option since it's really not tied like the Stoughton project was? And I don't know, is it any speedier?
I think, and the bigger the project we can make, the, the more attractive we're going to make it to, to bidders to come in. And we have a relatively small project this year. It's only two streets. And so to add a little bit more on there, I think we'll probably get more bidders.
Cause I just, I mean, just because they're separate and you gotta load and move and I, and that's why I wondered if it's better going that way or not. So. All right, any other discussion?
Just such a quick comment.
Yep.
Um, in regards to eight C, I just think you had already thanked Denise for all of her hard work, but I'm assuming she had a hand in kind of updating that ordinance and just kind of going back and updating old ordinances. I know that's probably laborious. So I just, uh, thank you for that. And then also eight F with the youth soccer, just thanking Marshall who happens to be here, just recognizing a need and creating an opportunity, um, to, to provide for that need. I think that's what Chaska's all about. Um, and I'm sure the youth program will be very grateful for that. So.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to number nine, action items. Uh, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty, public hearing to consider certification of spring twenty twenty-one, delinquent utilities.
Um, Councilmember, this is an action typically that we take just once a year, uh, annually, but we're actually, uh, suggesting we move this to a biannual uh, action, uh, where we actually go through for people who are, uh, over delinquent on any type of utility bills or things like that, uh, through the city and create an assessment role to be able, uh, to, uh, then they'd be, uh, put on their property. Uh, so if it sells, then, uh, we're able to, to be made whole. Um, I'm going to turn this, uh, can't see on the screen, but I believe Noel is there uh, to just sort of go over exactly what we're seeing for assessments. And he can talk about the reasoning too of why we're going to suggesting that we go to two times zero as opposed to just one.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, council members. The item before you tonight is a public hearing for the adoption of a special assessment rule. Excuse me. The intent on this is to certify to property taxes for collection in twenty-two delinquent water sewer and stormwater bills and those electric bills that are delinquent that the property owners have agreed as a part of their agreement with us for service to allow us to assess their property. Um, during the past year, we have not done any utility disconnects during the COVID nineteen order. As a result, we've seen an increase in the number of delinquencies that we are carrying as well as, uh, lost accounts that we've been unable to collect on once property owners or renters have moved out of their properties. Um, so what we have, what we've been working on this year is reaching out to these particular entities and trying to help them bring their accounts current by letting them know what we can do for making payment arrangements as well as, um, providing resources that may be able to help them with their delinquent accounts. This assessment rule tonight was prepared for those accounts that are more than ninety days delinquent or have a balance greater than fifty dollars. Typically, we have only done this in the fall. Because of the increase in the amount of delinquencies, we decided it would be best to start doing this twice a year so that we would be able to secure our position by adopting the assessment rule, which then allows us to report it on any special assessment searches which are going to be required by the title companies before property is sold. So when we started this particular cycle, we had over a hundred and fourteen accounts that were identified with a balance outstanding across the utilities of over sixty-five thousand dollars. We've had about a forty-five percent response from the accounts, getting us down to sixty-one accounts tonight with over, just over thirty-seven thousand still outstanding and delinquent. So the resolution tonight will have four different schedules. One for the electric delinquencies and a second one for water. The third one is for sewer and the fourth one is for stormwater. I will note, typically we see more parcels on the stormwater schedule because there are several par- properties in town that do not have a utility account but are subject to the stormwater charges. And we find that these people tend to, uh, not pay on their utility bills and just have them certified each year during this process. So we've included those if it was over fifty dollars at this point. So there is a public hearing requirement for this tonight. Um, when the assessment, when the hearing is closed, there will be a resolution. The resolution will establish the assessments for a period of one year to be collected on taxes payable twenty twenty-two. There will be a five percent interest charged on these assessments. And the amount shown on the resolution do include the one point five special assessment fee which is collected by the city to offset the costs we are charged by the county for certifying these assessments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those questions.
Anybody have questions for Noel? Noel, this is, this is going to be, um, one motion though, right?
That is correct. They'll first be the public hearing, so they have to open the public hearing.
Right.
Take, take input, close it, and then there'll be, uh, one motion to adopt the, uh, assessment resolution.
All right. So is there anybody here or anybody up here first that has any questions? All right. Um, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at seven twenty. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak about, uh, the delinquent, um, utilities? Kevin, anybody online?
There is, uh, no one online.
One online? Okay, well, I'm going to zoom ahead to seven twenty-one then and close the public hearing. Um, with that, I would need a motion to, um, to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty, um, considering a certification of spring twenty twenty-one, delinquent utilities.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to, um, adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, nine B, uh, has been withdrawn off of the, um, uh, list tonight. So now we move to nine C, which is adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine, approving concept plan for, um, Ensconced Woods, uh, Johnson, Ryland Builders.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, this is a concept plan, uh, that is coming to you from the, uh, Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. Uh, if you remember, uh, some time ago, there was a concept plan that was put, uh, in place for the Carlson property. So first of all, these two properties are basically directly west of Guardian Angel Cemetery on the, uh, west side of County Road, uh, forty-four, uh, or Big Woods Boulevard. Uh, since that time, the, uh, the company who had, uh, put in the concept plan for the Carlson property, uh, uh, decided not to move forward. And since then, the Carlson and Roebling properties have worked together to find one, uh, developer, uh, builder for the, the site. So what you're looking at tonight is both of the properties together, uh, which is, uh, uh, basically an extension of the, uh, neighborhood that's just to the north and, and west and, and, uh, was part of the Southwest Chaska Master Plan. Um, Liz is here tonight. Can't see her on here, but, uh, Liz is here tonight to go over a discussion about, uh, the concept plan itself and to also talk about some of the, any of the comments that, uh, came up during the planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. Uh, we do have a concept plan. Uh, I'm going to share my screen here. So just a moment. Can I get a thumbs up that you can see that before I start here?
Oh, Kim.
Thank you. So as, uh, Matt mentioned, we have a concept, sorry, concept plan and for, uh, the project known as Ensconced Woods, uh, being proposed by Johnson, Ryland Builders and remodelers. Um, so the site is highlighted in blue on this aerial exhibit. Uh, it encompasses both the, the Carlson property and the Roebling property just east of that. Uh, the Carlson property makes up, uh, about, uh, twenty-five acres, twenty-five to thirty-five, or twenty-five to thirty acres, um, in total, but they're only looking at the most northern half uh, of the actual, uh, Carlson site. Uh, there's a creek that kind of runs through the midsection here, so it only kind of makes it viable for the north section to really be developed. Um, and then the full ten acres of, uh, the Roebling site, um, is also being proposed to be developed. So you have Founder's Ridge on kind of the western edge here. You have County Road forty-four on the north side of the site. Um, Guardian Angel Cemetery, as Matt mentioned, on the north side as well. Um, and then surrounding woodland, uh, surrounding the property. Uh, so in terms of a history, Founder's Ridge, which is the development that abuts this one today, was approved back in November of two thousand and thirteen and February of two thousand and fifteen. Um, and at that time, uh, stub streets were provided, uh, along its west, south, and east sides. Uh, specifically Founder's Path stubs, uh, on its east edge here, uh, which was in anticipation of these, uh, two properties developing and connecting in. Um, in June of two thousand and twenty, uh, we did see an initial concept plan for the Carlson site. Um, and that was approved back then for a twenty-four lot detached villa project. Um, however, that project is no longer moving forward, so we have a different concept plan this evening, uh, encompassing both the Carlson and the Roebling site, which has been, uh, uh, an encouragement, uh, from the start, uh, since those two properties very well intertwined in order to connect into the Founder's Bridge neighborhood to connect back out to the County Road. So we have a completely different plan in front of us this evening. Um, the developer did, uh, do the due diligence of holding a neighborhood meeting on April twenty-third of this year uh, to basically go over the new concept plan and, uh, receive any initial feedback from the neighborhood. Uh, so some comments received out of that were pertaining to traffic, tree preservation, and just overall details of the plat. Um, so the concept plan that they're requesting this evening is for a twenty-nine lot detached single-family development plus an additional lot for the existing Roebling residents. Uh, so total of thirty lots altogether. Um, in terms of how this relates to the comprehensive plan, um, it does meet the comprehensive plan's goals for this site, uh, being that it's guided for low-density residential. Um, in terms of the existing conditions out here, uh, so the total acreage, uh, that the project encompasses is roughly twenty-five acres in size. Um, there are several, um, buildings, uh, notably on the Carlson site with the home and several outbuildings. All of these will be removed as a part of the project. Um, and then on the Roebling site, again, they're kind of showing the existing Roebling residence, which is more so on the northwest portion of the property uh, to remain as it is. Uh, this gains access, driveway access onto County Road forty-four. Um, and again, this will all remain intact, um, kind of through what the project is proposing. Um, they did identify one wetland, uh, which is on the Carlson site. They'll have to do a more hefty delineation report, uh, with the preliminary, uh, but that's at least a high-level perspective as of right now. Uh, and then the creek ravine system, you can see noted here in blue, um, runs along kind of the southern edge of the overall site. Um, and with that, there is, uh, a large amount of trees that kind of cover both these properties and I'll kind of get into the specifics related to that too. Um, this is their site forces exhibit, just kind of showcasing some of those, uh, views into and out of the site. Um, and just again, those existing conditions and analysis that the developer has done. So if we need to refer back, we can certainly do that. Um, and then this is the concept plan. Um, again, we have twenty-nine new lots that are proposed, uh, off of an extension of Founder's Path, uh, just on the west edge here. So that would basically come around, um, come southerly a bit and end in a cul-de-sac on the Roebling site. And then there's a secondary cul-de-sac kind of on that northwest portion of the Carlson site to service those twenty-nine lots. Um, they're also showing a private drive, uh, extending off of this public street, uh, to access four additional lots. Um, with this piece, um, it, it does pose a couple of concerns and challenges just in terms of mixing a private right-of-way with public utilities underneath it. Cause right now, uh, sanitary sewer is shown underneath it. So mixing the two has always been a concern and something that as a city, we've turned away from in terms of the private-public mixture. Um, and with that, uh, there also needs to be, uh, a level of turnaround provided for emergency vehicles. Um, so again, with all those factors kind of in place, um, we've kind of highlighted this piece to be eliminated, uh, as they continue to move forward as there just seems to be too many complexities with trying to make it work, uh, on this site. Um, this would also, uh, give opportunity for additional tree preservation as well. Um, so, uh, our, uh, analysis and, uh, requirements, uh, show that this would be removed. Um, and then in terms of access into the site, so, uh, the only access shown is off of Founder's Path on the west side here. So there's no additional access shown onto the, uh, County Road and the County Road has Carver County has essentially given us the word that no additional accesses would be allowed along this stretch. So everything is, uh, to come off of the existing road system and existing county road access that comes through Founder's Ridge. They are showing a construction access, however, onto the county road. Um, and Carver County has, uh, from a high-level perspective, uh, shown this to be okay. So they'll just have to work with uh, Carver County to, um, figure out the details surrounding this. But this would be, again, a temporary means of access for construction courtesy app to access the site and avoid going through existing neighborhoods. Um, so we'll just have to continue working through that with the county as they, they move forward on this. Um, one other piece, just in terms of layout, they show several ponding areas through the development. Um, and some of them are kind of hard to tell how they would be accessed at this point. So they'll have to work through, uh, access points and ensuring that they're within, uh, outlots to be owned either by the HOA or, uh, by the city. So that'll be a, a step for them to work on in their preliminary. And then lastly, with the wooded area, wooded steep slope has been delineated on the southern edge of the Carlson site, and that was determined in the field shortly after the concept plan was approved back in 2020. So the Roebling site will have to do the same thing, just to determine exactly where that edge is. They're showing generally where it is, but again, we'll have to verify in the field where that exactly falls. And then tree preservation is very important for this site, as both of them are heavily wooded. So I'm gonna kind of break this down by Carlson and Roebling's pieces, because they did engage an arborist who kind of provided an analysis of either property in terms of what exists out there today. So Carlson, there's roughly three different tree types out there. Basically, what's highlighted in kind of this lime green is more so that big woods species, some more significant trees that have kind of grown up over a period of time. So we've kind of shown that area as kind of high-priority area for preservation. They are showing in green on these concept plans where kind of their initial analysis of where tree preservation can occur, so mainly along the edges here. Again, as they move forward to preliminary, just to further analyze kind of these big woods areas primarily for additional tree preservation. And then with the Roebling site, they also did an analysis there. And here, they also have a large presence of significant and larger trees out there, kind of mainly situated in that lime-green area. But there's also some in kind of this golden area, too, just that have evolved quite nicely over time. Again, they're showing preservation mainly along the edges here and along the creek side, so looking at additional opportunities primarily in the yards of these larger lots, which again are, will be custom-built lots. So there will be more discretion or flexibility, so to speak, with these custom homes and lots to try to preserve more trees. But we'll have to look at kind of the grading characteristics and what's needed out here to really determine kind of where those priority areas are gonna be when the preliminary comes in. And with the elimination of this private drive and just streamlining everything on a public right-of-way, there should be opportunity for additional tree preservation with the elimination of that. So again, one thing to kind of further work on as they proceed forward. Just wanted to provide a couple pictures of the home product that the builder has done or designs. So again, these are custom-built homes, ranging from ramblers to mainly two-story type homes. So again, just want to reiterate some of the things to work on for preliminary. So tree preservation is a big piece of it, prioritizing kind of those significant areas on both sites, looking at some preservation and actual yard spaces as well. And then with the layout, eliminating the private drive and reorienting those lots onto the public street. And then just some minor pieces of ensuring that the setbacks that are applied out there off of the county road and the wooded steep slopes continue to be met moving forward. So in conclusion, we're asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt Resolution Number 2021-29, which is approving the concept plan for in Skans Woods, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, Paul Ryland is also here if you have questions for the developer.
Questions for Liz?
Possibly. So with the elimination of the private drive, I'm assuming that changes the layout of the neighborhood. Are we looking to, are they still looking to keep 29 lots somehow? Or is that, how does that change that?
We don't know the exact total count with the elimination of the private drive, because effectively, you can still probably fit three lots as you reorient them. So it might take some creativity from the engineer on how they do that and still maintain the lot count. But it's hard to say what they're gonna land on with the elimination of this.
It seems like there were just general comments from the neighborhood meeting, and I assume they were pretty similar from the last concept plan we saw, just, which I think were mentioned, it was like traffic and such.
Yeah, I would say there was probably more acceptance of this newer plan, given the fact that the lot sizes have increased in size. And I think one of their main, major concerns was kind of the size of the lots and the detached villa product fitting into the Founder's Ridge area. So with the change to custom-build lots, I think they were relatively more in favor of that. But yes, other pieces have kind of rung true through this second phase of the concept plan for them pertaining to traffic and how that's gonna work, and construction access and so forth. I know Paul has been staying in contact with the neighborhood, and he has stated that they'll continue to be in communication with them moving forward.
Yeah, I can comment. So for full disclosure, I live in Founder's Ridge, which is the neighborhood that this access is through. I'm not on the association, so don't have any conflict there. I would say that the feedback that I've heard from the neighbors is that it is, you know, lot size was important before, the lot size were a different kind of product, and this is a similar product. I think, you know, I think there's acceptance that there's, it's nice that both properties have been put together, and you're kind of looking at one development plan versus maybe another development plan later, which would draw traffic through. You know, I think the concerns, you know, the construction access is a huge concern, so I think that's, that's a positive they see as long as that lasts. Obviously, if that lot sells and that is in the way, that becomes no problem. It just, it is a very, you know, I'll just say that we fill an elementary school bus basically in that neighborhood. So there's a lot of kids always in that neighborhood, so, you know, traffic or construction traffic particularly coming in is I was concerned. And then I know, you know, ideally in a perfect world, the neighborhood would like an access onto Big Woods Boulevard. I think the county's made that very clear. That's, you know, that's tough to do, even maybe, you know, a right-in, right-out type approach. I know that was brought up before. Again, the sightlines are not great there. I get that, and I think the neighborhood gets that as well. The one thing that I will just say that I encourage the association and the builder, and it sounds like, and I watched the Planning Commission and the president, and I don't know if she's on right now or not, of the association talked about just working with the association. Because it is interesting that the only access into this new potential association would be through another neighborhood, which isn't completely uncommon. But, you know, I think there could be, I think there's just some, there's better chance of continuity of kind of look and feel with this concept plan than the previous concept plan. So I think that is important as well. And then I think the last thing I'll just say is that on the access piece, the commentary, I think that, truthfully, that I've tried to remind to my neighbors a little bit is that this is the first piece of land next to the development that's being developed. But there are more accesses out of the neighborhood that will eventually occur. So like myself, I live more on the western side of that development, that if, you know, when to the, I guess it'd be to the north side, or the west, the west side, when that gets developed, if I want access to fall, I'm gonna go west versus kind of down that main entrance way. So it just happens to be the first kind of piece of land around the area, too, so.
So you touched on a possible question that I had for the developer. There is a proposed HOA in this development, is that my, from my understanding?
I mean, he answered the question, but I can let Paul answer that.
Yeah, thank you, City Council. Do I need to state my address or anything?
No, we know where you live.
Okay, yeah, every city's a little different. So I'm Paul Ryland, and I work at Johnson Ryland Builders and remodelers. And the answer to the question is, as I explained at the Planning Commission meeting, is that these are single-family lots, so there is no common area at this time. So there's not a legal need for an association. So there's basically three options. One is no association, no protective covenants. The second option is protective covenants, rules and regulations that are set by the developer and then carried forth. The third option is a HOA. We'd likely go for the second option, but I did state in the meeting that we'd be happy to look at what Founder's Ridge is doing and consider patterning something similar. So, but I haven't, I have not yet heard from the, from that neighborhood chair. So look forward to reviewing the information when the time comes.
I had another question. I'm not as familiar with your neighborhood. So it's been, I drove over in that, the area where the development was, but I didn't drive through your whole neighborhood. Is there a park in your neighborhood? No, but that's because we have the proposed park.
Yeah, so there's, we own the 55 acres that is to the west of like John's house. And as part of that, there'd be both a neighborhood park component and also a community park component over there, too.
That leads me to one other question I have. Trail system connectivity is, I know there, it's a steep, but there's a beautiful ravine that runs through there. What's the, what's the master plan on that?
We're actually going through the process of actually looking at that now. In fact, there was a group of, you know, five or six of us that actually walked through the Big Woods about a week ago, just to get a good sense of what's back there and what the potential for trails is. And so we're starting that process of looking at that. You know, Marshall's here, one of the things that we have going, obviously, is our trails and master plan process. We'd like to include that as part of that, but it would, you know, we collect trail fees throughout this area where there isn't trails put in. And so the intent would be to use those resources to really create connectivity around the neighborhood to make sure that people both can get to those common areas like the park, but also there's some spectacular property, you know, with some of the woods and stuff there on there that I think long-term could become an asset for us to have. And, you know, a lot of them right now are steep slopes, so we'll end up being deeded those because they're undevelopable. So there is some networks of things that will be possible out there.
I think the neighborhood's joke, the trail to the brewery would be a good.
So if, now you're gonna do this, if this gets approved tonight, then you gotta go through the preliminary. How long before something like that comes back?
It depends on the developer in terms of their timeline and how quickly they can get civil drawings put together. But typically, from a concept plan approval, usually they skip a month, and then they come back the subsequent month, if everything's still moving forward on their end.
And Paul, is it your hope to move dirt this year?
That was our hope, yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know, any other questions? I don't know, we've kind of.
I've got a couple of questions. Yep, Liz, can you put up the proposed plotting again?
Yes.
Yeah.
The concept plan?
Yep. Yeah, so, so two questions. One of them's that, you know, I assume that we've already vetted this for like, you know, fire access and things like that. Yep, so that's like meets, like, so there's no issues with that, just because it's kind of like they're dead-end streets, basically, that come off of like a single entrance, right?
Right. I think the one exception is off of the private drive, which they've referenced as being a concern about turnaround.
Yep. And then the other question is the construction entrance, when would that get closed off? Because, you know, I could see them like using it for quite a good chunk of it. But, you know, obviously, there's like some home sites that are, as where the construction entrance exists.
And that would be a detail they have to work out with the county, is, you know, at what point do they close that off and have to use internal streets? But I want to say, you know, once all of the lots around it that aren't being impeded on by the entrance would use that entrance until those are done.
Okay. And so since it's just concept, this, you know, we expect that, you know, come back with like, you know, trails and things like that mapped out in more detail as we approach the next phase. So, all right, I'm good.
Anyone else?
I'd love to see a right-in, right-out. I won't do it justice if I don't say it again, and I know we don't completely, that's not our decision. I know it's a county situation, and I've definitely encouraged my neighbors to reach out to the county to express that. You know, I just, I just look at it when other neighborhoods, you know, and I'm not comparing size of houses, but like, you know, White Oak Drive, right, Mayor, where you come in, when you have single-point-of-access moments, it becomes, you know, a little bit of a piece to, of a concern and traffic, too. So I will, I'll say that again, and I know that that's a county decision. And, you know, if the county tells you no, I'd encourage you to ask again, type thing.
How many, Liz, how many homes are in Founder's Ridge right now?
I want to say just under 50.
So 50 plus another 30, we're talking about 80 homes, single entrance, right?
Right.
My neighborhood is like 84 or something like that, so it's just kind of about the limit of what you can put on a single entrance.
There's no, so because this is the two pieces of land here, with the prior concept plan, as I was kind of mentioning, there was potential that eventually there'd be more, but because this takes up both, really that direction, there wouldn't be anything else. I don't see any stub streets or anything. Okay.
Right.
So that helps a little, right? Because there is that unknown of like the next part of the development, what if it was like 50, 10, you know?
Right.
But I think that, in my mind, helps a little bit with the access issue.
And it's less houses in the end. I mean.
Are you referencing the Carlson property?
Like, because the first time it was just the Carlson property, like the last concept plan, right? It was almost this many houses on just the Carlson, and there was still the Roebling property that could be developed into whatever. But this, since it takes up both of those, there's no like stub streets or anything, this is it.
This is it. This is the end of the story, because there's residential pass that going down the county road, so. And then you have that waterway and steep slopes, so you can't come out the back.
I understood it. And yeah, because the access always, but that helped my brain at least with the whole access thing.
I like, I understand where you're coming from as far as multiple-point accesses. I can appreciate and understand that from a neighbor perspective, especially the people that live on the main entrance part, you know, they're gonna get hit with the most traffic. But I also think about the sightline, and I also just think about overall safety in our community. And I feel like, I mean, a right-in and right-out still poses risks and dangers, especially when you're coming down that hill. And yeah, I, you know, so that's obviously something to be, to wait out, so.
What's the speed limit on County Road 44?
Forty-five.
People usually go probably closer to 55.
But I think they're going uphill. So you're on 45, and it seems like you're going a lot faster, because it's a pretty steep hill, right?
Of course, it's a blind, you know, you have like a blind entrance there.
Exactly.
Yeah, that could be pretty hairy.
If you could clarify, was, was the request to the county made as part of this concept plan or the last concept plan?
Um, I don't know if it was directly shown on either of those concept plans, but internal discussion from this developer and the previous developer were had with the county on an access, and it's basically been no process there because of the safety component and the sightline component. They've, they've kind of nixed it off the table.
Thank you.
That temporary construction access would only be allowable until occupancy of the first dwelling. So it kind of defeats the purpose of already having it.
Not very much, just knocks a couple of months off of it.
It's, it's here.
I, I guess I understood it, that until the Carlsons sell their property, or I don't know, I guess I read that differently.
What's the clarification on that? Cause I didn't read it that way either.
So is, uh, is it, is it something that, is that something that we could, you know, like the developer could request in the county a longer use of that construction entrance?
You might wanna make that request as staff too.
Staff, yeah.
Um, so I think it might not be a bad idea to actually put that as a condition in here, um, because the, I mean, we all know what the issues are gonna be if, if that construction access goes away and there's only one house in there. I mean, it's, I mean, there's still plenty of construction vehicles that, that go through a neighborhood after that, so I, I would highly recommend that as a condition to, to push the county to get a longer, uh, construction access there.
I would support that.
That's good clarification, cause I, I guess I didn't necessarily understand what this, but yes, that would be, you know, I think, I'll say this, the, the neighborhood can understand the access long-term. The big constructions going down right in the middle, taking a left cost would be, would be painful. I mean, there's kids, my kids included, going down on their bikes non-stop in the summer months and um, you would not wanna see a situation or anything happen. So, yeah, I think I would definitely support that as, as long as that could be done, the, you know, the better. Obviously, it's, you know, eventually you gotta sell those lots and start building that to get that. Uh, but the longer, I think that would be very supportive of that condition.
So, if the rest of the council sounds, certainly, you know, you're on, on board if everyone else is, I'm supportive of like adding that as a condition.
The, uh, extending the construction entrance?
Yeah.
Supposing at the other end, that just doesn't make sense to me. Like you would think you would just use it as long as you could.
Thirty homes, yeah, absolutely. So I'm not sure how to word that one exactly, because this one's kind of, you know, it's, because it's complicated by the fact there's homes in there.
Got it. I think Liz can wordsmith something here.
So a condition to encourage, well, I don't know if encourage is always helpful, but a condition to.
Extend the construction, temporary construction.
Extents.
I, I would pick as certain as possible.
Yeah. I. Entrance to, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I would suggest that you do it in relationship to the lots that it crosses over rather than, um, you know, saying the first house. So if he were to design it so it comes out onto the tip of that cul-de-sac and only impacts those two lots, that you could use it until those two lots are built on. I, I think that's, that's the right way to do it from my perspective and, uh, um, you know, that maximizes its utilization.
Is there a risk that those two sell first, which I guess could happen regardless?
Well, as a part of this plan, the applicant needs to come back with the preliminary of a traffic management and construction management plan that you need to look at. That's an existing condition and so, um, if, I think that would be dealt with in there. And I think at the Planning Commission, he suggested that they might hold off on developing in that area, just try and maximize that construction activity. Access to the county road.
Yeah, that'd be good, cause I didn't understand that that way.
Yeah. So with the preliminary, we'll get much more details on that, but I think for now, in dealing with the county from the developer, the neighborhood and the staff perspective, it's helpful, um, just to provide us additional, um, support, um, to facilitate the, uh, extension of the timeline on that, uh, construction access. Thank you.
Sounds good.
And single access there, but eventually there'll be additional accesses. That's, I mean, that's, um, yeah.
It's just, it's the first one, right? Yep, understand that.
Yeah. Any other questions? Is there, um, is there anyone from that neighborhood that has a comment or question that they'd like to share? Um, with council? Kevin, you got anybody with a hand up?
No, there, there's no one with their hand raised on Zoom.
Great. Uh, well, we'll move forward if there's no one here, uh, to have a comment. Um, what's your pleasures?
Uh, I would move to approve resolution, to adopt resolution, um, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine. The concept plan for Innsots Woods, Johnson Ryland Builders and Remodelers, uh, PC twenty-one, twenty twenty-one oh-six, with the addition of the condition um, to extend the construction access as stated by staff.
It's a motion by Councilmember Graff. Second by Council. Long, sorry.
Look alike, but.
You do. A second by Councilmember, I usually get those two mixed up, the two H's. Um, so second by Councilmember Hatfield. Got that right, I think. Uh, seconding, uh, again, adopting resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one twenty-nine, approving concept for Innsots Woods. So, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. Motion carries, passes five oh. All right. Thank you, Paul. All right. Uh, next, we are moving to nine D, approving the concept plan for Wagner Woods, Lennar.
Mayor Councilmembers, this is a, the second concept plan, uh, that's coming from the Planning Commission, uh, with a recommendation of approval. Uh, this is the Wagner, uh, family farm, which is, uh, just off of, on the west side of Audubon, just north of, uh, uh, its intersection with Pioneer Trail. Uh, there is a, a proposal here for a hundred and two lot development on approximately forty-five acres. And, uh, Liz is here to, uh, go over a presentation talking about the concept plan itself, uh, and be able to, uh, uh, provide, uh, some insight into some of the feedback that was received, uh, both from, uh, the, uh, Planning Commission, but also the Park Board, uh, because this is a development in our comp plan that we actually have, uh, neighborhood park, uh, that's been guided uh, in the past, so, uh, so she can provide, uh, some feedback in that for Marshall's here too, if we have uh, any specific questions from the Park Board. So with that, I'll turn over to Liz.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. I'll share my screen again. Can you see that?
Yep.
Thank you. So as Matt mentioned, uh, we have another concept plan request this evening for the, uh, project known as Wagner Woods. Uh, and this is being proposed by Lennar. Uh, so the site they're looking at is highlighted in blue on this aerial exhibit. Uh, it's Wagner property owned by the Wagner family. Um, and this is off of Audubon Road, which kind of, uh, abuts the eastern edge of the site. Um, you have the Autumn Woods neighborhoods, uh, to the south, uh, west and northwest portions uh, of the property. Um, and then you have Autumn Woods Drive that kinda runs along the north and west sides there. Uh, so in terms of some historical approvals, the Autumn Woods and Autumn Woods South, uh, neighborhoods and subsequent neighborhoods, um, uh, got approved in September of nineteen eighty-two and September of nineteen ninety-four. Uh, Autumn Woods East, second addition is the one that stubbed off, uh, the stub street of Ironwood Boulevard on the southern portion of the Wagner property. So there was always anticipation that that would uh, extend through onto the Wagner property, uh, when it, uh, was ready for development. Uh, the developer did hold a neighborhood meeting, uh, ahead of Planning Commission and City Council. Uh, they did that on May third, uh, of this year, uh, to meet with the neighbors and introduce the project to them. Um, so a number of comments did, uh, get received out of that meeting from the neighborhood. Uh, concerns related to density, lot sizes, traffic, and just how it orients and is included into the Jonathan Association. So the request this evening is for concept plan approval for a development totaling a hundred and two, uh, detached, single-family lots. Um, and then in addition to that, a space for a public park. Uh, both of these pieces meet the guidance of the comprehensive plan, which guides this area for low-density residential, as well as an area for a neighborhood park. Um, in terms of kind of the existing conditions and pieces out there, uh, so it is roughly a forty-five acre site, uh, that's highlighted in red here. Um, there's a house and outbuildings that are on the property. All of those will be removed uh, if this project moves forward. Uh, they did delineate out five separate wetlands, uh, on the property, uh, which encompass approximately five acres total. Uh, wooded steep slope was also delineated on the property. A majority of that is on the north side. Um, and then there's a small little portion on the south side there too. Um, and then they also did go through, uh, uh, some proactive work of doing a tree survey of the site, and I'll show, uh, some exhibits related to that as well. Um, also wanna note that this property doesn't directly abut, uh, Autumn Woods Drive. There's actually, I'm gonna use this exhibit, um, two parcels owned by the city that basically abut the, uh, northwest and north sides of the site. Um, so kind of important in noting just how it lays out with the overall, uh, development out there and what's proposed. Um, the tree survey that they did, um, they did kind of colorize it as well, just to show where uh, some of these different conditioned trees are. So they've noted, uh, excellent ones being darker green, good are the orange, fair are the kind of lime green, uh, and red being poor. So it just kind of gives more of a analysis of, um, the condition of the trees out there. Um, the concept plan, uh, again, they're proposing a hundred and two lots, and within that, they are proposing two different products. Um, one they dub as their landmark series and the other they dub as their venture series. So the landmark series is their larger lot, which is, uh, roughly sixty-five foot wide lots. Uh, and these lots are oriented more so kind of in the inner portion or central portion of the development. So with Ironwood Boulevard extending north to south here, all of those landmark series lots are on the west side of that. And there will be seventy-five of those. Um, and then they have their venture series, which is kind of a smaller product, but still a detached, single-family, uh, product, just smaller in size, and there will be twenty-seven of those uh, on the east side of Ironwood Boulevard Extension. Um, and with the extension of Ironwood Boulevard, so it connects in where it's shown to step off on the south side here and then kinda runs a curvilinear line, uh, up to the north edge. Uh, so again, with, um, kind of this parcel not directly abutting Autumn Woods Drive to the north there, they would have to uh, encroach over, uh, or acquire, uh, city-owned property to make that connection there. Um, but it lines up with, uh, the, the townhome development to the north there, uh, which is, um, proper alignment. Um, so again, they'll have to work with staff on acquiring that and making, uh, that full punch through there. Uh, there is no access being shown on the county road. So again, the county, uh, County Road fifteen, also known as Audubon Road, uh, abuts the east edge here. Um, they're not showing, uh, an additional access onto the road with this concept plan. Um, I know it's one of the concerns of, uh, both the Planning Commission and, as well as the residents out here, just in terms of evaluating a potential connection out to the county road. Uh, the county road has already, uh, nixed the opportunity for a full access uh, onto the county road, but they could certainly explore a right-in, right-out, uh, of sorts, um, uh, within the development. So, uh, that is certainly something, um, they'll have to further evaluate, um, as they kind of move forward in the process. Um, but at this time, they're not showing it on this plan. Um, and with them abutting this county road, uh, we typically require, um, some adequate screening along those edges, uh, along, uh, these frequented roadways. Uh, so we are, uh, requiring landscaping and berming, um, uh, consistent with, uh, the north side here at the, uh, townhome development to kind of continue through uh, on this development. So conceptually, they're showing, um, that happening. We'll just need to make sure, uh, within the Civs, uh, that they'll continue that moving forward. And then lastly, they are sanctioning off the northwest portion of the site for that public park space, uh, that is guided in the, the comp plan. Um, and again, the selection of this was intentional, um, based on uh, the, um, property abutting this area to be owned by the city. So essentially, it would be a contiguous, uh, parcel, um, with the park being moved to the northwest portion. Uh, along with that, there's, uh, basically, um, a wooded area, but kind of an opening, uh, flat area as well, that kind of proved to be a very idyllic, um, spot for a park. So this was, uh, kind of slated early on, um, from a, a staff walkthrough of the site, that this would be, uh, an ideal location for a public park to connect into uh, city-owned land. So right now, they're showing roughly a two-point-six acre park space, um, which is basically kind of everything along the wooded, steep slope, uh, open area here, and then this, um, significant portion in the north, northwest. And I'll kind of get into the Park Board comments, uh, related to that a little bit off later on. Um, and then how this plan kind of fits into the overall, uh, tree preservation and inventory done on the site. Um, so getting back to kind of what they've done from an inventory standpoint, they were able to uh, survey seven hundred and twenty-two trees total on the site. Uh, so five hundred and ninety-one of those are proposed to be preserved, um, mainly along the south edge here and along the north edge, uh, adjacent and in the park place that's proposed. So total, uh, what's being shown right now is that a hundred and thirty-one trees would be impacted with this layout. Um, and then, uh, as far as staff is concerned, uh, we try to highlight some clusters of trees that are, uh, usually important or significant in saving. Uh, they roughly are larger oaks or maples. So we've, uh, indicated an area, uh, to look at further, uh, that encompasses some larger oak trees ranging in caliber from twenty-nine to forty-one inches in, uh, size. So this would be, again, kind of adjacent to that park space there. And then wanted to provide a couple, uh, plans, kind of highlighting their landmark and venture series. So these homes shown here are their landmark series. Uh, again, will provide either, uh, a single level or, uh, two-story type products. Um, pretty typical. And then the venture series are again, those kind of smaller products, uh, which will also provide both the Rambler, um, and two-story options. Um, so the Park Board and Planning Commission have, uh, reviewed this project, uh, ahead of this meeting, uh, specifically in regards to this, the park space I kind of wanna get to. Um, so the Park Board met, uh, last week on May eleventh, um, and a memo was, uh, put together and attached in your packet to kind of give you a consensus of that meeting. Uh, but their recommendations, uh, were pretty consistent with what staff's comments were going into the meeting. Um, but they did come to the conclusion that they wanted to receive a minimum of two-point-six-five acres for the park space, and then the remainder of the park dedication requirements to be made in, uh, cash. So the remaining would be a cash contribution, uh, to kind of help balance out, uh, paying for the park and how it gets programmed. Um, in addition to that, they also, uh, would, uh, like that the, uh, land dedication that was proposed kind of more so on, um, sorry. So the land dedication, starting at the northwest corner of Lot fifty-two and everything east of there, I'll show on a plan here. So basically here and up to this point here that I'm kind of indicating is what they wanted to be completely omitted from the park dedication requirements, um, mainly due to it not being contiguous with kind of the, uh, area slated for the public park area. So really, uh, centralizing it. Um, in addition, uh, they, uh, made the conclusion that these three lots adjacent to the park should be eliminated to kind of make up for this area. to kind of make up for this area over here to be one contiguous lot and have a larger opening off of the public street and the development.
Thanks with that. First of all, that strip of land that goes behind those houses is pretty steep slope, so it's pretty unusable. And you know, it's not our practice to take unusable property for parkland. We want to make sure that it can be actively utilized by people. The other thing is it would be very unusual to see a park that doesn't have good visibility from the street. So if you, if you all of a sudden had those houses in front, I mean, it would feel like the houses are sort of part of the park and would not really be welcoming. And we tend to see, you know, parents don't feel comfortable sending their kids to a place that they can't see.
Thank you, Matt, for adding that in. And then lastly, just as it relates to the park space, the planning commission also did provide a recommendation at their May twelfth meeting. So this was again, a day after the park board kind of met and discussed and came to a consensus on the park space, but they added a condition in their recommendation essentially implement the parkland into the development and to not take on any fees for the parkland dedication. So wanted to kind of show those two different recommendations coming out of either the park board and the planning commission, which have also been noted as separate conditions in the resolution that we're hoping for you to discuss and kind of weigh in on in terms of what feels most appropriate to move forward with. But wanted to lay this out in terms of kind of the different recommendations that have been put forth from both the park board and the planning commission side.
So Liz, just to clarify on that, they're basically saying bigger, more acreage for park in lieu of the fees for parkland dedication.
Yeah, the difference between the two is the park board tried to balance getting enough land to serve as a park, but also leaving enough money to be able to develop it. That has been an issue in past developments where we've had land that, you know, we may have taken the full ten percent dedication, but then we don't have the cash to be able to actually go and build the park. And so it's not that it never gets built, but it usually happens a long time afterwards. And usually ends up being a pretty difficult process because now you're coming into a neighborhood that's fully established and sort of trying to create something that didn't exist there. So that was sort of the, the, the direction that the park board was going. The planning commission, on the other hand, really recommended to say, take the whole ten percent as as land dedication as opposed to cash. And then we, you know, then there'd be some decisions we'd have to make as far as how do we actually, you know, how do we actually pay for the actual playground or whatever apparatus we have there as part of it?
So is the setup for that, those three homes, like, is, does that play into it? I guess I'm confused why one recommended one and one, one the other.
Yeah, the setup for the three homes was more to say, you know, before, you know, what you're seeing in the concept plan here is that the developer, if they had their druthers, would give a piece of that corner and then they'd give a whole strip along there with the corner. Well, quite frankly, the strip and the corner don't add much value to a public park. And so we said, well, instead of providing us that, we think you should provide these three, take out these three lots, both because it's not a good idea to have a park behind three houses. But also because we want usable land that can be used for the park. The parkland dedication fee is separate. So you know, basically if we took the entire land dedication, it would add about another one-point-nine acres to the actual land dedication we'd have, but then we would not have the cash to go along with that to be able to pay for things like playgrounds and sidewalks or whatever we, you know, would decide with the neighborhood to actually put in the park.
How much is the land dedication worth by itself?
It's four thousand dollars per unit. But then you have to take out what they'd actually dedicate as land dedication.
So hypothetically, if you had like ten acres, right, that's forty thousand dollars. You could, it's either forty thousand dollars or ten acres, or if you split it some fractional amount, then.
Mark would probably know the detail. Well, Mark should know the details better as far as what we'd be looking at. But basically with this, this match or this sort of mix, we'd be, it'd be, what we'd receive in cash would be enough to basically pay for the typical playground and things like that, that we would have in a neighborhood park and be able to get the land to put it on. One of the things that helps in this is that we own the land that's around it. So we may only get a certain amount, the two-point-six-five acres for the park, but we also owned all the land around it. So we're able to sort of take advantage of that, make the park bigger, but then be able to take some cash in lieu of it to be able to pay for the equipment itself.
I have to clarify one question. Is the two-point-six acres, is that with the land that was recommended to be, you know, the lots that were recommended to be omitted from the being developed and put into the park? Or is that?
Five acres would be the total amount of land that we would be requesting. So that would be.
That's not kind of what's on the, on the map currently. Okay, just want to make sure.
And is what we're not asking for.
Okay.
And so that's part of the whole concept planning process is for us to be able to provide feedback back to them. And that's what the park board and the planning commission did. They gave different feedback, but basically saying what you're showing for parkland there, we don't think meets our goals for parkland. Park board felt it should be those three lots taken away and that we keep some for actual cash, so we can actually build the park as part of the development. The planning commission said, no, we think you should take the whole ten percent of cash and we'll deal with building the playground some other time. I will tell you, one, again, one of the challenges we have when we don't balance land dedication and cash contribution is it does lead to delays in actual park development. We've had a number of parks throughout the city that, you know, Greek Parks example, where it didn't build for twenty-five years after, after the, you know, development went in. Because now you're talking about using the entire community's resources to pay for a neighborhood park, where you're trying to create some balance so that you can have that neighborhood both dedicate the land and be able to pay for the equipment that would be within it.
But we need to give some sort of direction.
You need to give some kind of direction. And either ways, fine, we've done it both ways, but that's one, that's one of the reasons that Liz set it out to say, okay, there's two different, I mean, you guys might come up with something completely different, but that's what the park board and the planning commission said. And we just need to be able to get some clear direction about what direction do you guys want to go with the park?
Can I ask a question? So I watched the videos, Jonathan Association. That's a questionable thing at this point. What if this neighborhood comes into Jonathan? What happens in, in regards, because they have their tot lots. I know there's one that's buffering the edge of this. But what does that happen with? I know that this would be a city park so that, but does that, does that change things?
It doesn't. Because we have a number of places within the community where we have city parks that are not too far from Jonathan tot lots. The tot lots, they have sort of a different policy for where they put those tot lots in relation to homes. Our policy has been that we have neighborhood park within walking distance of every home, which, you know, goes out to about a half a mile type of radius. I will say the chat, real quick, the challenge on, you know, there was some discussion about whether you get the land and then Jonathan ends up building a park on it. One of the challenges of that is, you know, the city's around forever. And but, you know, Jonathan Association may be around its organization forever, but they could make changes in the future about maybe we don't continue to provide playgrounds or maybe we don't, you know. One of the things that's been thought of about creating neighborhood parks, even when Jonathan has those, is that we know that we're controlling our destiny in the future to make sure that there's a park there where when it's, you know, a private organization, we sort of lose that control.
So I just have a kind of a distance relational question. So if I live on lot one, how far am I from that park? Am I a half mile? Am I more than a half mile away?
About the greatest distance in this neighborhood is about a quarter of a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Another perfect question. If we took the whole ten percent, how many lots does that take away additionally?
Kevin, probably three. It's like you said, it's about one-point-nine acres, so two to three lots.
Might be a little more than that. Give or take. Did anyone else have any other questions? Otherwise, I can finish up here and hand it off to you guys.
Well, go ahead.
Um, so I think just to recap, some of the major pieces here, you know, for the applicant to work on moving forward. Certainly tree preservation, specifically to the cluster that we've pointed out in the public park space. Additionally, they'll have to work on a traffic report for this development that's both being triggered by the, by Carver County, but also the city to make sure that the overall development is still performing at a level of service that is acceptable. And then with this being adjacent to a county road, working on the landscaping in Birmingham on the east edge. And then as it relates to the layout and this will do kind of wholeheartedly in terms of what the council decides tonight, making sure they provide a park layout and overall acreage that's meeting the appropriate recommendations that are laid out this evening. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash thirty-one, approving the concept plan for Wagner Woods. And then based on the conditions that are listed within that, with the one exception that you should select the appropriate condition or create the appropriate condition related to the park dedication piece. We did try to bold it out on the resolution, just to make it clear in terms of the different recommendations coming from both park board and the planning commission. So selecting kind of what seems best related to the discussion this evening. Happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, I believe Josh Metzer is in attendance, who is the representative from Lennar, if you have questions for them.
I'll ask the question because we just spent some time talking about it. Construction access would be off Audubon both ways?
At this time, I believe they're looking at a, a construction access, pretty typical, or similar to the Innskans Woods project, and they would look at a county road access for that. So again, they'll have to work with Carver County to develop details on that.
One thing I'm confused on is have, has the developer actually reached out to the county about access on the Audubon? I think there's some confusion on that. I saw some emails to commissioners today, but I didn't see a response. So I'm not, I was confused on that, but it's even been asked.
He's actually going out on site tomorrow and actually taking a look at that. I know there were some residents that made the request to have them go out, so.
Like county staff?
Yeah, so it's, I think it's somebody from the engineering department.
Maybe, uh, can't think of her, the gal. Sisler, Angie.
Angie Sensen, yeah.
I, I heard that they're going tomorrow at tomorrow afternoon and looking at if that's a possibility.
This is for right in, right out? Okay.
I think, I don't think that they'll grant a full access.
Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the county or the planning commission actually made the request to actually look at some kind of access other than Buttercup or Ironwood.
Butternut.
Butternut, I mean.
Yes.
Ironwood and Autumn, Autumn Woods Drive. So looking at something in, right on to the, so that is something that was a condition or request that came out of the planning commission.
Yep. Yeah, I think that one's just really important because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there's even a light at Butternut is only because of the giant Chan-Hassen development across the street. Because the Chaska side of Butternut is not at all, in my mind, conducive to any large amount of traffic. It's like so tight right there and even a couple cars would block home accesses and you can't go left and straight and right. You have to stay in one lane. So I think that's, that Butternut intersection is really important to look at. That's like a huge concern, I know for the residents and myself there. So I think that traffic study and access on Audubon is important. I'd imagine most of the traffic will travel south to like Chaska Commons and things like that. So.
One of the things to point out is, and it was in the county's memo on this, is that they are requiring a traffic impact analysis as part of this development. So that's something they haven't completed yet. But these are the types of things that we're going to make sure that they're addressing as part of that impact analysis, to be able to have some real data to go behind. You know, you know, what type of traffic levels are we going to see? Where do we expect that the cars are going to go? Be able to have some more firm data-driven analysis on that.
When, I can't remember, when we've done tra, some traffic studies before, do they take into consideration things like Autumn Woods Drive not having sidewalks? Do they look at things like that with, or are they looking purely what's happening right on the road?
Now I wonder to Kevin.
They, they can do both. And I think that in this, you know, in terms of pedestrians, I think that was something that was brought up with the planning commission, even that they wanted more of a holistic analysis. And I think that's just part of the direction that you provide. And I know that the developer has already sent out a request to meet with city staff and county engineering staff to kind of go through and his traffic, their traffic consultant to kind of go through kind of those priority lists so that they, you set the study out in the right frame.
Yep. So I think one of that's, one of the things that really concerns me is that there's, I've spoken to a number of residents in that area and the concerns actually are challenging because there's already an existing traffic issue, right? And one of the existing traffic issues is that, you know, people do tend to drive very fast down that road. And because there's no sidewalks, you're basically naked in the roadway. If something happens, there's no delineation between pedestrians and vehicles, which makes any speed. So if you're going twenty miles an hour, which is five under the speed limit, you know, you could, you could get killed still. I mean, it's, it feels fast because you're like, you're inches away from a vehicle, not, there's no sidewalk, no curb, nothing. And so I think it absolutely has to take that into account. The other thing I'm concerned with is right now it's June or May, and then we're coming up on June. So let's say the traffic's in the middle of summer. That won't take into account any of the Chan-Hassen High School traffic that comes through. And I think that one of the things that was caught out by a number of residents is a lot of Chan-Hassen High School students, no offense to Chan-Hassen, will come through Autumn Woods Drive and then, so they can miss two traffic signals, right? Because there's the traffic signal on Buttercup and there's someone on Audubon. And they'll intentionally take that so they can not have to deal with two traffic signals, even if they may be green or a right turn. It's just that human nature of like, it's fast, y'all just cut through the neighborhood, hit two stop signs, blow through them, done. And of course, high school kids, I mean, you know, just high school kids are high school kids, right?
Audubon is a wide road. I pulled over on it and I could still like lay down before I was laying in traffic. And so I just, I would hope that Connie would consider that, that.
I'm just envisioning like what you did to analyze that.
But I could, I literally pulled my car over and I could have before I was going to be in traffic. Like there's a lot of space on that road. So I would just, you know, set, even from the sightline conversation we had earlier, that's not an issue here.
Yeah, it's a very different road.
That road is only going to get busier. I already had a resident bring up from before this, the large amount of traffic and the sound, I think that Birmingham is important too, by the way. But I just think that it's, it's a road that there's, it's actually possible in this case to make it a better situation. And so I think it should be considered.
I think the thing that's, that we need to take into consideration is because of the. I think the thing that's, um, that we need to take into consideration is because of the, this is that psychology problem again. So this is where that traffic study starts becoming a human psychology issue, is that right now, because of the way it's situated with the signals at Butter, uh, um, Butternut and at Pioneer Trail, if an, if a resident in the new neighborhood, let's say it's their only access, right? They can make a right out, still make a right turn into the existing neighborhood on Butternut and then still cut through and take that same shortcut. There's nothing stopping them from doing that, then that means that all the residents in Ironwood get that traffic. So, you know, and.
That lost me.
Yeah, what did you say?
Okay, so, sorry, Liz, you have a map that shows that and we can kind of walk through it. If you can put that up on the screen, we can show that.
Why she's doing that? Because I'm, I'm kind of confused. Why would Chan, where would people that go to Chan, where are they coming from?
Coming from the high school.
They cut through the neighborhood to get to Chaska Commons faster on their lunch break and roll between the high schools.
Yeah.
So you've got, or Carver.
Right-hand turns if they're coming from the high school.
Yeah, I, I get that, but the.
To eat something, there's no. Faster, things like that. That's, you have to think back to high school days. They cut through there to get their lunch faster.
I, I guess I factor that differently. I would take the county road.
I don't disagree with you and what I would take is, but, um, what the reality is that residents are saying that a lot of people are still coming through their road just because of that. I mean, it doesn't mean everybody will, but there's still enough people who do that increases traffic artificially. That's the problem. And so then they come through and they speed because they're not stopping at a friend's house. They're using it as a pass through and that's the issue. And so there's an existing traffic issue that the concern is, is going to be comp- compounded by the fact you're adding another, you know, six thousand transits a day. Right? That's the concern.
Six thousand?
Study is to actually do the counts.
That wasn't true.
No, from, um, the new neighborhood, from they add those hundred, hundred plus homes. Sorry.
Oh, I think, I think one of the things that really could get to that in the traffic study is to understand the counts on the roads, um, which we can probably get some kind of counting stuff. I mean, if the concern is we're going to miss some traffic before school gets out, we can probably get counting strips down prior to that happening to be able to get a sense of what the current traffic levels are, uh, on the existing roads just as is.
Yeah, what, because I think, and this is probably separate from the Chan Hassen students. Um, one resident mentioned that's right on the end of Butternut there, that people even take a right in and then go around the little, um, middle part there, the word's escaping me, to take another right. Because that light is quirky sometimes. They're even doing that. He says it's offices in front of his house and he watches people do it all day long. So I think capturing that random traffic that isn't always logical is important.
So, and so the list put up the, the graphic, so the, if you look at, um, so there's two different entrance points on the, or there's three different entrance points on the, um, east side of the, the area we're talking about. There's Autumn Woods Drive in the north, which is right adjacent to the, the townhomes there. So, so, um, under, under case one, people will take that road, follow that. And Liz, if you want to follow a hand there, it will basically follow that road all the way down Autumn Woods Drive and then down to Acorn. And then make a right in Acorn, then make a right out. So then there's basically, you know, one stop sign or, you know, one stop sign and then one light. And it's a right turn. So that way they bypass the two signals because there's a signal at Butternut and, um, Audubon right there, they bypass that signal and then they bypass the one, um, at Pioneer Trail and, um, Audubon, which is down there. The other, um, the other use case that where we see there's additional traffic coming from is, um, students will, or just some people, not students necessarily, but people will make a right turn onto Butternut and then try, and Liz, if you wouldn't mind going up to, again. Yep, and then make a right turn on Butternut and then follow it on Ironwood. And then there's a lot of traffic that comes down there. And of course, you know, that's another concern. Um, I think that. Sorry, the, this just turned off there. Can you hear me better? Okay. Sorry, this keeps turning itself off for some reason, so. So basically, the, the problem is, is that, um, that people will come through both, you know, um, Autumn Woods Drive to the north and then circumvent everything, of course, and they're speeding down a road that has no sidewalks. And then on the other use case that they will come in through Butternut, go down Ironwood and then to again, meet, to miss that, those two signals. But in either case, there, the whole goal is to miss those two signals. And so the question is that, you know, this is, and this is an existing problem today. And that's, and you know, the more, you know, I've been talking with residents there, the more it's been clear that that existing problem is something that people just kind of put up with and it's been unaddressed for a while. And that needs to be addressed in some way. And the challenge is, is that if you add, let's say, let's say there, um, let's say the only entrance exit hypothetically to the new development is on Audubon, then there'll still be that, is it just turned off again?
Your battery's.
Battery's bad.
Do I, is it like a shake weight or something?
I turned my love.
Is that better? Okay, so the, so I think that the challenge of that I've, I've been hearing pretty consistently from residents is that there's an existing issue with traffic going fast down these, down these roads and excess traffic of people who don't necessarily live in the neighborhood passing through or using as a pass through, that needs to be addressed. And the challenge is, is that if you add those, you know, hundred and two homes with, you know, the projected, you know, six thousand transits a day or is like the, a week, I'm sorry, things on transits a week, then that becomes, um, yeah, sorry. Um, so that six thousand transits a week, you know, will effectively, you'll have some percentage of that, not everyone, of course, but some percentage of that will increase that existing condition that has challenges, which is, you know, effectively someone will make a right out of, you know, that neighborhood and then make a right down, um, Butternut, then follow down Ironwood, right? Or some might go the other direction too, depending upon their preference. But I think that that's the concern is that they're still going to take that route because they'll miss those two stoplights. So it's basically compounding an existing issue that needs to be addressed still.
Same concept, because we are, you know, in this concept, I realize that, that yes, the most comprehensive traffic study possible.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
I completely agree. So I mean, it's the, the, you know, including the high school traffic, including, you know, commute traffic and the usual things that are included.
I think, I mean, understanding the existing traffic levels is going to be important, I think, for, for the neighborhood. I think the one thing we need to be cautious about though is if there is cut through traffic now, um, I mean, that is a separate issue and I, I, I mean, we'd have to really think about what strategies we could, uh, you know, could get at because, you know, obviously it's a public road and people have the right to, to, to drive on it if they want to. Um, but the traffic study itself is going to focus on what impact that development has, not what it, you know, and I, I get what you're saying, the compounding on top of whatever's there. But it's, the traffic study itself won't get into how do we address current, uh, concerns that exist there. But that can be something that we can look at separately.
I think the, that makes sense in that, I mean, I would hope that would still look at like Butternut and then, um, the sidewalk issue on, uh, Autumn Woods and just the whole, because yeah, a right in, right out, let's say that's what it is. A right, they can still take a right in, now they just take a right into that neighborhood and still cruise through. So, yeah, I, that makes sense.
We're going to transition maybe away from traffic because I appreciate the commentary and I agree with a lot of the comments that our council members. I do want to comment on a little bit of my frustration, um, with the concept plan as it relates to the park, as we talked about. I just find it frustrating as a council member when we see a concept plan that comes that kind of throws unusable parkland. Like, we talked about it, but I want to just state the obvious here because we, we said it. And like, to me, that's not a good faith effort and that frustrates me. Um, you know, I think we still have to figure out what we want to do with that recommendation. But I do want to point that out because we've said it many times, uh, as we've talked about that. Um, but you know, we've worked with lots of developers and we have good relationships with developers. We appreciate that. And so we always just really expect them a good faith, uh, approach to a concept plan. And, and to me, this, that wasn't a good faith attempt to attract, uh, the park land. I mean, you could clearly see that that was not usable land. And, and it, it was, it's the, they're maximizing the number of houses, which they're a business, I get it, and it's a hot housing market. But I just, that frustrates me. So I just felt the need to say that because, um, we want to be a partner, we want to work with individuals and, and developers, but it really takes down that good faith piece too. So I think we still have to have that conversation on what we want to do as a council with that, but felt the need to, to state that.
I'll just say that, you know, I, I spent like ten years or nine years in the planning commission and I've seen a lot of developments, um, including a number of Lennar developments. I said, there was a lot of Lennar developments, a number of them we saw. There were beautiful developments that came to the table. This one, even on the surface, looking at it, is the worst I've seen of all the Lennar developments I've seen, or one of the worst just in general. I, I know, it's pretty harsh. But, I mean, it, I mean, what, my, my, my initial take was, they said, okay, what are the, what are the city ordinances around zoning around this? Here's the maximum density, let's lay it down to maximize ROI. What's left over, we'll make that apart. And that's kind of what it felt like when I looked at it. And so, but, and I, the good news is there's still a lot of opportunity to do the right thing here. I know Lennar is a good company. They've done the right thing in other places, including here in Chaska. So the question is, you know, are you willing to step up the game, right? And I believe Lennar can and will, they need a little incentive this time. But, you know, right now, it's, you know, right now, there's, I have a challenge with the density of this and the, the use of it and even where the park is, you know, a park should be centrally located in the community, right? It should be at the center point of a community. And this particular neighborhood is kind of tucked off in the corner someplace because that's where the land was.
No, one, one point I will make about the park, that we actually came in as staff and recommended that spot.
Really?
And the reason we did is because the area up in Autumn Woods to, to the northwest doesn't have any park. They don't have a tot lot, they don't have anything that's up in that area. And so one of the things that the comp plan called for when this land was developed was to be able to provide some type of parkland that's closer up to that northwest area, to be able to provide more opportunities for more than just this neighborhood. Because the neighborhood park has to serve that entire area. So, you know, I don't disagree at all with what, what John said. It's very unusual for us to see a concept plan come in where we have to sit there and say, take three lots out. We can't, just being honest, that's, that is something that we don't see very often where we have to go in and tell a developer, take out three lots because we're not going to take unusable land for, for parkland. But where the park is located was something that staff went out in particular and said, if there is a park, this is where it should be. So, and that, that's not saying that everybody has to agree with where it is, but I just want to make it clear that the developer wanted to have the park on the south end of the, of the neighborhood where it's down sort of close to a tot lot, but there's wetlands there. And so, and it didn't meet the goal of trying to get the park up where it could be usable for the places that don't have a playground now. So I just want to make it clear that the location of the park was something that was staff-driven.
So, one of the things that was not clear from the way the concept was laid out was that, you know, if that's the case, then it kind of looked like it was inaccessible from the other side. So it's one of those things that, you know. Okay, so that's the other piece. So if there is a, a park there, then it's, we'll see a focal point of not just that neighborhood, but the surrounding neighborhood in Greater Autumn Woods, then to make sure that it is, you know, at least when we illustrate, okay, this is the intent. Yeah, that would, that would help a lot.
And that's the sort of the challenge, when you see a concept plan that's so far off what we're recommending, uh, it's hard to envision it. Um, but that's one of the things, Marshall and I went out there, uh, last Thursday afternoon to sort of check out the other side of that park. Um, you know, we do own the land that's all the way around and there's been some concerns expressed as far as exactly where you would put a crossing to actually get over to that part, so it's not on the, the corner and things like that. So there's definitely a breakthrough we're going to have to put in there and we're really looking at where's the most appropriate place to put, uh, that so that the Autumn Woods neighborhood can enjoy it too. And then how we actually make a trail connection along the east side of Autumn Woods Drive to be able to wherever we cross so we can get that neighborhood up in there.
I, I appreciate hearing those comments because I was frustrated about the location of that park. Um, I, I feel like if, if we're gonna put that park there, I mean, just in just aspect of day to day, what's normally going to happen if this proposal and the housing locations stay as they are, that tot lot's going to be used by this neighborhood. They, the Jonathan Association factor comes into play. It's just not fair, right? It's just not fair.
It's that other places too. I mean, it's where places that should be in the Jonathan Association, they are.
Right, and I think this is, this is that, that crossroads of having the foresight of, of seeing that and saying, okay, we need to really weigh that really heavily. Because, I mean, the, the park being in the corner like that, it's just, if I live on lot, lot one, if it currently is the way it is and I have a three-year-old child, I, I'm just not going to walk all the way to the other corner of the neighborhood because that's the city park when I look across my street or down the road and I see a usable park. I mean, it's just.
Like, we have a John, or we have a tot lot that's right behind us and the neighborhood park is about three blocks away. So it's not uncommon in the Jonathan area that you'll see, like, sub-neighborhoods actually use more of the Jonathan, uh, you know, tot lots for areas. But I, I just thought it was important to point out that, you know, keep in mind that this property should have probably developed thirty years ago. And if it would have developed thirty years ago, then you'd be looking at where's the most centralized location to actually put this park. So it's not just serving, I think we got, we, we can't look at just this block here and say that it's, that the neighbor, that the city park can only serve just this block. I think we have to keep in mind that the city park and the comp plan is meant to serve the entire Autumn Woods neighborhood.
I think the challenge there is that, is that there's a, the whole the homeowners surrounding it are paying for that tot lot. I mean, it's, it's not a matter of access, it's a matter of principle, right? And I think that's the challenge.
Question, the Jonathan question is a different one. I'm talking about just the city park. But I, I think that the planning commission said it too, and I think it's absolutely right on that. You know, I think looking, exploring and putting this into the Jonathan Association makes it a heck of a lot of sense because people are going to be using those assets, no question.
And it sort of obviates the issue because then if you say, well, it's all part of Jonathan, well, you're all part of Jonathan, so it doesn't matter if you use the park or not, right? So, I mean, to me, that's, you know, it kind of makes sense because, and it, you know, and also, like, we went through this like a year and a half ago with a different neighborhood in Sagewood, where, you know, when we went through it the first time, the Jonathan Association said, no, 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 we don't want anymore. So you guys have to be outside. And then like a year later, they came back, hey, we want to be part of it and sorry, we already formed an association, right? So, yeah.
I know that one well because that's where I live. And to tell you, I think it's completely unfair that our neighborhood doesn't pay towards assets that are right next door to us. It, it's, it's, it should not be that way. I think it's entirely appropriate for this to be part of the Jonathan Association.
Yeah, and you guys know, I'm not even a fan of associations and I agree that this should be a part of the association, so that says a lot. I, yeah, I agree with the park. I wasn't a fan of where the park was until I heard it explained better. And I'm like, okay, I get it, but it does just drive forward the, you know, request that it's a part of the Jonathan Association. Um, I think it just makes sense because it quite literally is touched on all sides by it. So the park, and the park, the other question we have at hand of what do we do? I do think just because a hundred homes is a lot of homes and just in my mind with the park issue, getting a park in there sooner than later, when we have this super mature neighborhood that's not had a city park necessarily for so long, getting one in there is, sooner than later is important, but that's my thought and I was a little confused on the issue at first, so.
I would just say that, I know we'll, we'll get to the point of, of public conversation on this. So I, I would ask that that be shared, like, no, we can't ask these potential builders because they haven't bought it, but the surrounding neighborhood that's represented here, like, what is important there? Do you want to see that park develop and have the funds immediately available to develop that park? Or, or know that you might not have a park there right away because the funds aren't there. I'd be curious to hear that and your commentary when we, we get to that plan because I can't speak to that because I don't live there. And it is a community park for your community, which we've said, it's not just for this neighborhood, it's for all of Autumn Woods. So, um, you'll have a lot of points to make, I'm sure. So I appreciate if that one could sneak in. I'd be curious to hear kind of what, what your perspective is on that question.
Oh, now you got me a little bit. Is, is that considered a neighborhood park? Are we talking that, see now, that's different than a city park. So you got to clarify that.
Um, and it's the, you're thinking the community is in the Autumn Woods neighborhood.
Yes, sorry. Yes. We'll call it the Autumn Woods Park.
So it's a city-owned neighborhood park?
Yes, thank you.
Is neighborhood parks different than a city park?
Yes, correct, correct. Thank you.
And now I, I just had to make sure we were talking apples and apples.
All right, the other, the other thing that, you know, I think that was, was kind of, we kind of been beating around the bush on a lot is the density, especially on the, on the west side, not as, doesn't bother me as much, but the east side bothers me significantly because the set, even I look at the setbacks, there, what, there are forty-five foot, oh, it's, sorry, fifty-foot lots with five-foot setbacks. Now, five-foot setbacks means the distance between two houses is ten feet. So if you take two feet, this is a six-foot long table, take two feet off of this table. So it's from here to the end of the mayor's table is how far it is between houses. And that's, now, it's one thing if it, those were, that was a neighborhood by itself, but this is a neighborhood right next to homes that have, was like fifteen-foot setbacks, just like thirty feet between homes. So it's like a drastically different property market or property type. And that's really concerning because it's like, you know, I mean, it's, they're not gonna be cheap homes just because of the market, but they're, I mean, but they're really, you know, I mean, it's from literally here to that, that power strip is the distance. And, you know, that's barely social distance, right?
And I agree, it's tough because we get called on a lot to have affordable housing in Chaska. And I know that nothing in the housing market right now is affordable. I agree, I don't, you see the price point, I mean. No, nothing in, nothing, I mean, to me, when I bought my house, I bought it for half of one of these. Um, I agree, I hate when we dump as many homes in anywhere, but that, you know, I've been vocal on that before. But I'm also, like, yeah, it's just, it's a catch twenty-two.
I think it's a quality of life issue, and I think that, you know, there has, has to be something to be said about the fact that their backyards are gonna be buddying up against a very busy roadway, and then you're talking about being stacked side by side extremely close together. I think that's a, a, a combination that, you know, would be undesirable. I understand the price point, I, I wholeheartedly desire to have a diversified housing stock in our community.
Yeah, I think this is the wrong way to do, do it.
But I don't know, yeah, I just, I'm not, I don't love this.
With, to your point, like, the density, there's three homes on Butter Nut that, about this, and those three homes, the end one has almost four lots coming in their backyard. If I had four neighbors coming.
I think, I think those first four homes on that need to be revisited and a different home.
Like, because I would be upset.
Residential, they need that.
Four houses in my backyard.
I have a general question, I don't know who's, Liz, if you can answer this. There, I went and surveyed over in this area, I noticed there's like a fence that buffers, you know, Butter Nut, the three homes and everything, and is that going away when this neighborhood comes in?
That's probably a private fence, isn't it?
No, I mean, it's stretched, the whole stretch. I mean, I, I put the bug spray on and walked around back there.
It runs the whole autumn, on Audubon, all the, all the way down.
Oh, yeah, that fence, I know what you're talking about.
You're referring to the backsides of the Butter Nut Drive?
Yeah, yeah. As far as we're concerned, that's gonna stay in place.
Okay.
So I know the density is really, to me, well, the density is, is an issue. I mean, it's, I think, you know, council member Harper, you kind of nailed it on the head. It's a quality of life issue because when you kind of look at it, you know, in terms of the qual, quality of neighborhood, because it's definitely inconsistent with what's next to it. Because those lots on average are point two acres, right? And then if you look at the lots that exist surrounding it, they're around like, I looked at a lot of the lots around there, and some of the larger lots are about an acre, and some of the smaller lots are on like point four, six, point, you know, a little over point four. So, like, they're basically like double the size of what these lots are, if not three times the size of what these lots are in some cases. Um, and then the bigger lots, on the other hand, are like, you know, point four, coming up in point four acres, and there's one that's almost an acre. So those are kind of a little bit closer, at least in shouting distance, in like the, the west side. But on the east side there, it's definitely challenging because they're, they're really packed in. But here's the, here's the irony, right? It's like if they're kind of being, you know, kind of looked at as like, well, they're kind of like starter homes, but they're over a hundred thousand more than what the median home price is in Chaska, right? So the median home price in Chaska is barely under three hundred thousand. So they're not at all any stretch considered low-income houses, right? There's no way you can consider a four hundred thousand starter, that's before you add upgrades to countertops and, you know, and sinks and dandies and fixtures and stuff, right? You're talking close to a five hundred thousand dollar house by the time you do some upgrades, right? So they're half million dollar homes that are basically jammed together.
But I think that's where the problem lies with me. I looked at the floor plans and the, and the exteriors, they look beaut, like beautiful homes, but they really are densely stacked.
Yep. And then they, like, the architecture laid are really nice homes, I completely agree.
All right, anyone else before we?
One thing I'll say about, you know, as we're talking about density and providing comments on it, I mean, I think we have to be, we do have to be cognizant of the fact that the density that they provide in there fits the comp plan guidance. To me, the comments that I think are, are most important here, that I hear you saying, is that, you know, it's just like any development we have in the community, we need to make sure that it blends into what exists there. And so I think, you know, I, I think to me, if you wanna, i- if you really want to be effective in the comments, uh, you know, because keep in mind, this is a concept, you know, that, that we're, you know, instead of focusing specifically on the numbers, you know, because we've seen plenty of, of dense developments that have done a really good job of blending, blending into, uh, neighborhoods. And, you know, because it does meet the guidance for density, I think to me, the more, uh, the, the broader, better comment is to say, how do we make sure that it blends into what's existing around there now? I mean, you guys brought up a great comments about the, uh, houses down on, not Butter Cup, Butter Nut, Butter Nut.
Probably known as Butter Cup.
But, uh, comments about saying that there's, you know, it's a very different, uh, you know, feel and how, you know, because if you look, another thing we, we did as we sort of went through the, the neighborhood last week was to really look at, uh, down on the Autumn Woods south side of the neighborhood, there are smaller lots. And, um, they're nice homes and, and smaller lots, but if you walk through there, they do a pretty good job of sort of, of blending into the neighborhood and, you know, not feeling like there's stark differences, you know, between where the neighborhoods are. Now, part of that is, is that the landscaping is mature, uh, after a long time, and that's just part of just a neighborhood getting older. But it, but there, you, you can really tell that there was a lot of thought put into, how do these things blend together? That so while one product is very different than another, um, that it doesn't feel like it's completely separate neighborhoods that are in there. So just a suggestion to think about, you know, if, if they're meeting density requirements, it's really get, with the concept, it's really about getting to, how do we make sure that it fits?
So, I, I, yeah, go on.
I think that's a good point, because it is, I, in my mind, it would be stark to go from that many houses swished together to these large custom homes on larger lots. And when you go down Autumn Wood, where it transitions from Autumn Wood South into some, the home, you know, larger lots, you don't see a difference because it's like they almost put larger lots down that direction so that as you transition, and it could be like you said, Matt, that it's mature trees and things like that. But it all, if you look at the lots that are there, it does seem like, if you're looking on property records even, should get a better idea. Those lots are bigger as you get closer to the other large lots, and some of the smaller ones are down on the other end.
I also think it attests the fact that there's a trail system that runs through that neighborhood that really breaks up the housing lots, I think, and so, and, and helps kind of blend like you had suggested.
And, you know, it's, I think that one of the things that's really appealing about that neighborhood, and I, I was speaking to a resident, and I apologize if you're out there who you're gonna speak, but I'm, like, you had a great story. But, um, she said that, um, you know, the reason why she moved to Chaska and moved to that neighborhood, if she fell in love with the neighborhood, she said she hates the inside of her house and wants to gut it, but, but she loves the inside of, loves the neighborhood of, you know, that street. And it was one of those things where that's the thing that people love about that neighborhood, the feel of the street, the feel of the community, right? And that's what we want to try to preserve. And if you, if we, if Lennar builds a community, it kind of continues that feel, right? Continues that sense of community. I, I'm guessing that most of the people who are here would probably, and online would probably say, yeah, that makes sense. So I think that that's kind of the, the, kind of the general direction that I kind of feel like we're trying to get, is to build something like what's there, or something at least feels like what's there. And I apologize if I stole your thunder if you're out there.
I have a question for, uh, Lennar, and just if a, a write-in and a write-out was available, would that change the layout of this system? Would that change everything?
Are you asking Josh that question?
Yeah, I think Josh.
Is Josh, you can answer that question.
Sure, and I, I can answer the question, I actually have quite a few points I'd like to make. So, um, I can start there if, if you're ready for me to, um, go through a, you know, short presentation. Or if you wanted to maybe, um, pile on the questions, and I can try to address them, uh, one by one as I'm discussing.
All right, while you're here, just go ahead and, and bring up your points that you want to bring up.
Sure, and I'll state my name, Josh Metzer, with Lennar at one six three oh five Thirty-Sixth Avenue North in Plymouth, is where our office is located. Um, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for the opportunity here, uh, tonight to discuss the concept plan. Uh, Liz, maybe if you want to put up the colored concept, um, that'll help us reference as I'm talking through our points here. Uh, so the, the density question has come up, and, um, we are, you know, calculating right now based off of, you know, the comp plan states that low-density residential is, uh, anywhere from two to five units per acre. Our net density, when you take out the, um, exclude the wetlands that we're saving, um, our net density is two point four three acres. So it, that is at the lower end of what this, you know, guided land use district would allow. Uh, as far as housing types go, yes, you know, in, in most of our communities, we do like to offer, you know, some sort of diversification of housing types. Um, not only for neighborhood mix, but also obviously, um, to hit different price points, you know, of, of the, the market. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, no secret that housing prices are, are out of whack right now. And, um, these homes that we're proposing along the, the, along Audubon on the east side, it makes up twenty-five percent of, of our total, you know, home count. And these are more looked at as an alternative to a townhome. Um, it gets you a new home with a two-car garage and a yard. Um, some are two-story, some are one-story, but that, that's, that's the main idea behind these. And, um, the, the density, you know, not every home built here would be, um, at five-foot setbacks to each side. So these are fifty-foot wide lots. Um, the reason we're requesting five-foot side setbacks is this venture series, actually, we, we have thirty-five-foot wide homes and forty-foot wide homes in that series. So some of these lots would have a thirty-five-foot wide home on it, which would allow it to achieve seven and a half foot setbacks on each side. So not every lot would have, um, five-foot side setbacks. Um, but again, um, for us, um, you know, the, the starting point, um, price point on these homes is four hundred thousand. Uh, again, it's, it's not, it, it doesn't meet the, the definition of affordable, um, not, not close. But in our view, it's, it's our best op, you know, our best effort to make a single-family home that is, you know, more affordable than your traditional three-car, you know, three thousand square foot home, that's gonna be six hundred thousand dollars and up. Um, it's, it's a single-family option to a townhome is what we're looking at here. Uh, site access came up, um, that's been laid out pretty well. Um, the Ironwood Boulevard was, was platted and stubbed to the south property line of the Wagner property. So that naturally is one of the access points that we're going to be using. Uh, as Liz laid out, there, there is city property in between our north property line and Autumn Woods Drive right away. So rather than just creating a write-in, write-out, right onto Audubon as our second access to Audubon, um, we thought it a better idea to acquire that small portion of city property to get our second access onto Autumn Woods Drive for another option for people to go both north and south on Audubon. Uh, as far as whether a write-in and write-out would affect our plan, um, really, I mean, it would be two lots, um, somewhere along the middle there, that would be removed to accommodate a write-in, write-out. Um, so no, I, I mean, aside from that, there really would be no, um, required change to this plan. It would, you know, it would still function with this general road layout. Uh, but again, that's, um, as it's been pointed out, we will be, uh, going through a traffic impact analysis or a traffic study that, um, will be reviewed by both the city and the county. And we do have a, a meeting lined up here later this week with our engineer, city staff and county staff to kind of go over what the scope of that traffic study should be and what else should be included with that. So, uh, by the time we do come back for a preliminary plat, uh, we'll have that traffic study, um, to help us inform, you know, what sort of improvements would, would need to be made, um, as far as traffic goes. Uh, I did hear a mention that, um, council member Wong, you, you had mentioned that, um, it would be, traffic counts coming from this community per day would be six thousand. It's not actually, um, six thousand per day, it's six thousand per week. Um, based off of, uh, industry estimates for a hundred and two-unit, uh, development, I believe the, the daily count, daily trips will be eight hundred and seventy-eight projected, uh, coming and going from this community. So that, that's daily, the, the six thousand is actually a weekly figure. Uh, the park location, um, as far as the location itself, I think, uh, staff has pointed out that, yes, that was, um, a, a, a city, kind of decision to put it there. And we did walk, um, I've walked this site twice actually with city staff. And our idea for the, the reason, you know, the layout on the north there behind our, our homes there, um, was if you're out there, it's, it's, it's a nice piece of property, not just on that northwest corner, but all the way around the, the south edge of that wetland and around, you know, what the green line that you're looking at here, around the edge of that steep slope. So our idea was, you know, to dedicate all that as park, also to allow the city to take advantage of all the city, uh, that city parcel that runs basically from the corner of Lot Fifty-Five all the way around along Autumn Woods Drive to our, uh, Autumn Woods Drive entrance point on the east side of that wetland. So the thought would be that that could all be one large park. Um, admittedly, we could have done a better job of, and there's, there is still room, um, if it's an option that wants to be explored. But, uh, lots, you know, fifty-three through, um, forty-seven could be shallowed up quite a bit to create more of a, you know, linear passage through, uh, behind those lots in between the, the rear of the lot and the, uh, steep slope line. So, um, but, you know, if, if, um, if park board's recommendation, um, for exclusion of that eastern portion, um, and removal of lots fifty-three through fifty-five is something that council wants to support, obviously, the plan would be changed to accommodate that. Um, and by doing that, that would actually, uh, save more trees on the site. It would bring our, um, percentage, uh, saved of trees that were actually tagged and inventoried. Uh, eighty-six percent of those trees would be currently proposed to be saved with that, um, removal of lots fifty-three to fifty-five. Now, um, I'll, I'll note that there were hundreds of trees beyond that steep slope line in between the wetland and the steep slope that were not inventoried. So, um, it, it would be more than that, um, of, of trees on site that would be saved. But that just gives you an idea of the number that were tagged. Um, landscape buffering, um, and, and we do recognize, yes, there's, uh, especially on that southeast corner, there's quite a difference in usage, uh, of, you know, style of home and lot size. So what we would, uh, propose to do actually is to extend our landscape buffer. Um, whether or not the fence would come or go, I guess we can discuss that further. Um, I guess we'd first need to identify whether or not it's the Wagner's fence or, um, the folks that live on Butter Nut. Uh, but maybe further explore whether or not the, there's desire to, you know, keep that fence from the city's standpoint or even the, the folks that live on Butter Nut. But maybe further explore whether or not there's desire to, you know, keep that fence from the city's standpoint or even the folks that live on Butternut. But we would propose to extend our landscape buffer that we're proposing on Audubon. Extend that westward along that south property line either to that stormwater basin or we could all the way, bring that all the way across to Ironwood. So to create a little bit more of a visual buffer in between, in between the homes. So I know open space was maybe a concern of some residents' trails and open space. And just doing some rough calculations this week, we, it turns out that between the park itself, the area on the southwest corner there that's kind of in a darker green, that area would be platted as an outlot for tree preservation purposes and deeded to the city. So those along with, you know, the stormwater basins and the wetlands, 30% of our site would remain open space for the project. So we think that's a pretty decent number. As far as sidewalks and trails, if you include the trail on Audubon, you include our sidewalks, you can't see it on this plan, but there will be a requirement for sidewalks on both sides of all streets. So between sidewalks, the trail on Audubon and some additional trails that we would be proposing were at nearly 2.4 miles of trail and sidewalk just within these red lines here. And that does not include any additional trails that the city would propose on the parkland. So any proposed trails in the park would be additional to that 2.4 miles of trail and sidewalk. We know that the Jonathan Association, this being, becoming a part of the Jonathan Association is a concern. For us, we agree, it makes sense for this community to become a part of the Jonathan Association for many reasons. I myself have been in contact with Jeremy from the board president. And right now, we're just trying to, we're going through the process of confirming what sort of features are going to be required on this with this community. Some, you know, things like trails, obviously, but stormwater basins and infiltration basins for stormwater. We need to confirm which of those elements the city would be able to take over, own and maintain. If there are elements that the city would not be able to, we would want to confirm that the Jonathan Association would be able to take over and maintain those features. The key thing we would want here is if this does become a part of the Jonathan Association, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't want to create another sub-association underneath it for any other sort of maintenance item. So right now, we're just kind of trying to confirm what's going to be required for the site and what will be maintained and by who. But for us, yes, we agree, it makes a lot of sense for this neighborhood to become part of the Jonathan Association. You know, schedule might be a question for the project. We do hope to submit a preliminary plat here sometime in June if possible. And once we get through that process, hopefully beginning grading activities by probably late summer. And then street and utility work sometime in the fall and hopefully some model construction either late this year or early in the spring next year. Construction entrance, we, we hope that the county would allow us to use the existing Wagner driveway, which is right about the center point. You can see it there. It's right behind Lot 13. There's an existing drive there that we would be requesting permission from the county to use as our construction entrance. And would, could definitely, you know, if they do have a certain, like was discussed with the previous item tonight, if they do want to try to put a time limit on it, we can, you know, make requests to extend that timeline to further our use of the construction entrance there. And then, yeah, I guess just in wrapping up, you know, we've, this is the concept level, so changes will be happening on the plan. We've heard from the neighborhood at the neighborhood meeting and with letters that have been submitted, Park Board and Planning Commission and also City Council here tonight. So we're keeping a list of comments and concerns that have been brought forth and we'll be meeting with city staff and county staff to further evaluate things and see how the plan reforms and comes out from there. So we'll, I'll be here for further questions or comments, but thanks again for the opportunity.
Anyone else?
I have a quick comment. Obviously, you're in talks with Jonathan Association. I know that Jonathan Association, they provide the, you know, shelter mail spaces for the most part in neighborhoods. And I also know that this is a concept plan and that things are going to change. I think one thing just that I heard in the, I think it was the Planning Commission, was mailbox locations. And I think just in regards to just if, you know, the density of a neighborhood, I live in a neighborhood actually that is this dense that's being proposed in here. I live in a townhome. There's three associations, three homeowners associations in my neighborhood, John, so it can happen. Mailboxes are important and location of said mailboxes is very, very important. So I think it's just comment from me as you go through this process is to be very mindful about where these mailbox, these hubs are going to be placed, just because that can be problems in the future with the density. So just, that's my comment.
I have two questions, actually, it came to mind. First question is that when we do the traffic study, who actually executes the traffic study versus pays for it?
Kevin, you want to talk about this?
Sure. The developer prepares the traffic study. We review it and provide guidance in the beginning and review it at the end.
So I think there was a concern that was raised by a couple of residents about the bias of having the traffic study paid for and executed by the developer.
Reviewed by us at the end. So if we think that, I mean, we have our engineers look at it too to, because it shouldn't be the city's responsibility to pay for a traffic study for this, but we do need to make sure that we're taking a look at it at the end and that we concur with the conclusions that they're coming up with.
Then the other question is that Commissioner Grau made a comment about, about what should the, you know, this goes back to that park question about dedication versus land, right? Is there, is there an existing process that could be used to get a sense from the community of what the community would want in terms of, you know, like, you know, space versus, you know, fun, you know, setting up the park now, right, versus, you know, having more land and having to wait who knows how long?
I sense we're probably going to hear that tonight.
Yeah, I'm guessing that, but just, I know that everyone was here.
Good, but, you know, that's, I mean, it's, I think if it's unclear at the end of this, we should talk about if there's a process that we have, but I sense we're going to get a sense.
Or we might sense it's 50. I don't know. It's like, it's up to you guys, so. Okay.
Who else has got anything? I still, I'm just going to comment, rather than just screening behind those three ounces on Butternut, I still would like to see that revisited and do the blending. Screening works, but I still, and I still would like to see the lots on what I call the west half. Just say 60, 65 through 55 reevaluated. That again, it can blend with the neighborhood in the back. Just see if there's not ways that that can be done and help things out here. Those are just a couple of really quick things that.
Who had suggested at the end that, I don't, I am assuming, I see Liz writing. So I assume she's writing these down, but we had suggested that you actually make those conditions of the actual considerations you go forward.
So the condition of having, doing more blending in the back of the 55 to 65?
Well, just basically make it look like it's more of the, I mean, the Autumn Woods neighborhood is so different compared to anything. I mean, they're such huge lots. Just get it somewhere within reasonable. I mean, some of these lots here, I don't lose it here, I mean, .20. I mean, just, isn't there, isn't there a market for larger houses as well on a bigger lot or just a bigger lot?
Product. I mean, that was kind of the commentary, right, diversity of products. So it's an opportunity to diversify product by lot size.
I think that even when you looked at the adult web community, that had like three different product types, right? There was on the front was the smaller ones, then it's got back, it got to significantly larger product, you know?
All right, all right. I think most of our questions have been answered here. I know Ms. Rome Welter has kind of been a spokesperson. I think I'll just go ahead and let her start it off. And then I just, before we start this, I know there's a lot of people here and there's probably a lot of people that want to speak. And I want to try to get through as many as possible, but if your comments already been made, let's keep it for comments that aren't made. And all that I ask is that we're going to be respectful of everyone out there and that you're respectful of what we have to go through. So let's just kind of that all, let's just be nice and we'll get through this. And just again, I want to remind everybody, and I know that you've heard that this is concept and they're going to go back and they're going to revisit it. So this is what we call the first stab at a piece of property. And hopefully the comments have all been listened to. There's been a lot of great comments here. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Emily.
Thank you very much, Mayor Winchett, all council members. My name is Emily Rome Welter. I live at 2887 Ironwood Boulevard in what is called Autumn Woods East. I'm not here tonight on behalf of just myself. And I will present to you the signed petition. I'm here on behalf of 116 households on the following streets. Autumn Woods Drive, Burr Oak Circle, Red Oak Circle, Julian Drive, Forest Ridge, Butternut Drive, Ironwood Boulevard and Timberview Trail. To give you a sense of what that means, that's 116 out of 125 households on those streets or 93% of all of the residents on all of those streets have the concerns that I'm going to raise tonight. If you are online, I would ask that you put your camera on and put a hand up if you are here with the group tonight. And similarly, raise your hand here tonight if you are here to raise your concerns regarding proposed Lennar development. And I would just note for the record that that is virtually every person in the room, save city staff. This is not a discussion, and thank you, everybody online waving, and you can see that there are at least 54 participants online, many of whom are waving at this time. This is not a discussion about neighbors trying to prevent a development or to say, we don't want any neighbors. You can't sell the land. I want to make really clear that that is not what this discussion is about. The Wagner's family has wanted to sell their land for a very long time. We are happy for them that that is finally coming to fruition. It is their right to sell their land. We are ready to welcome the new neighbors. This is about the current residents of these neighborhoods, neighborhoods. Hundreds of households, hundreds and hundreds of people who are asking you to try to make this make more sense. I'm glad that Josh was on tonight and I think that there were some conciliatory statements made, particularly about the Jonathan Association. But in general, and I'm going to go into this in detail, Josh is here to bring Band-Aids to an open-heart surgery, okay? That plan needs open-heart surgery and you didn't hear him say, I hear your concerns, council members. I'll work on those things. Didn't hear him say that. The Wagner land proposed for development is 45.46 acres. The people that we are talking about here want over 100 acres surrounding that on three sides. The 116 households have very serious concerns following into several important buckets. I'm going to go through them efficiently and I do have exhibits for you. Density, we maybe will call that fit or matching the surrounding neighborhood based on Mr. Poteraski's comments, which I think are well-taken. Traffic concerns, the Jonathan Association piece, which has multiple elements to it, parks and trails, tree preservation, and then there are some odds and ends that are important. For example, like the construction entrance and pieces we'll touch on at the end. But I want to jump right into this piece that you have all touched on when you looked at the concept plan and said, gosh, this doesn't look anything like the neighborhoods surrounding it on three sides. Lennar sent a letter to a couple of residents per the city code that requires notification within 350 feet. And the letter was short, but one of the main sentences in the beginning said this, quote, "The density of this development will be similar to that of the surrounding single-family neighborhoods." When you look at what they proposed here and you look at what I'm going to show you now, that's just simply not a true statement. And there needs to be considerable work by Lennar as they move into this preliminary phase to make it fit within the neighborhood's surrounding. Let's, if Liz, if you're still there, if you could put up the picture that you had, I think it's the, one of the first ones of the development where you show the plat of land. It's primarily brown sheet. You know what I'm talking about. It shows the roads and all the developments. It's been referenced several times here. Autumn Woods, as you probably all know, is the left side of that, right? We talked about Autumn Woods Drive goes down the whole left side and it's a winding street. That was the original development and Liz mentioned that right there. Thank you so much, Liz. Okay, so at the top of the Wagner land, that bending road that comes in is Autumn Woods Drive and it goes all the way down the side. Importantly, it backs to Hazeltine National Golf Course, which has been considered and is considered by the people who live here, including all the city staff, the mayor, the city council, everybody, a gem of this community. The houses that would be impacted negatively in part above that property, that's an important point. So that's Autumn Woods. That's custom homes. It's 34.1 acres if you add all those homes together. 45 homes. If you divide those two numbers, you get .7. I understand there are other ways that people calculate how things are, but just for rough math, right? And I'm going to give you those two things. If I could approach you all, I'd like to give you the petition that is signed and then also the numbers I'm going to be running through here. Each council member has a full copy of all of the signed petitions as well as the numbers that I'm going to be going through right now. And Exhibit 1. The next neighborhood and all of the neighborhoods are named in relation to the original Autumn Woods. Okay, Autumn Woods North above that, which is principally Julian Drive, is 15.4 acres, 19 homes with a calculation of .81 when you divide those, okay? Autumn Woods East, which is where I live, that's live directly south of the Wagner Woods, that's 43.5 acres and 60 homes. When you divide those two, it's .72. Now let's really focus because you all have talked a lot about Autumn Woods South, okay? That's the Ryland development developed in the 1990s. So if you're looking at the Wagner land, the next big chunk underneath is Autumn Woods East. And then next down from there is Autumn Woods South. Now, these were more affordable homes on slightly smaller lots, but as you all have noted, because you've been there, they blend in almost effortlessly at this point. Why is that? Well, it's 41.2 acres. It's only 68 homes. So with the calculation, that would be, as I'm using the term, a density of .6. Interesting to note, they have over 19 acres of parkland, wetlands and trails. The lots in there are smaller than the other developments that I have mentioned. They range from .2 acres on this very smallest to just below a half acre. But importantly, look at the Carver County map when you have time. The smallest of those properties in that entire development either have woods, Jonathan-owned property or wetlands in their backyard. Jonathan-owned property, or wetlands in their backyard, making the property seem and live larger than it is, and of course, helping with the overall feel of that entire development. When we participated, all of us, in these other discussions with Lennar so far, one of the things that the Lennar representative have mentioned on the planning commission was, well, yes, but there are lots of natural wetlands there, and maybe the rules are different and whatnot. There are wetlands inside of the Wagner Woods as well, they're just taking them out. If they left the wetlands that were in the middle there and used the natural land and built homes around it, we wouldn't have to be having this conversation in such a severe way. The proposal for this land that we're talking about, look at it, it's the very last one, it's forty-five point four six acres, a hundred and two homes. Bringing that density all the way down to point four four with those five-foot setbacks, fit and style and finish not at all similar to the surrounding land and homes. We are asking you to accept the conditions of the planning commission and add into them as you have tonight to make this make more sense. Now I want to, this packing into this land of a hundred and two homes leads, of course, not surprisingly, directly to the traffic issue. I have a number of things here to help, I think, clarify this traffic issue. A couple things. The traffic is expected to increase, you heard the Lennar representative state, eight hundred and seventy-eight trips daily, so six thousand one hundred and forty-six car and truck trips weekly. This creates real traffic congestion, safety issues, and significant decrease in livability for the existing neighborhood. I want to start with the first problem that a number of you have kind of touched on. Let's start with problem number one. Look at the, and if we could, if Liz, you could go to their concept plan picture. Right there, thank you so much. Alright, so we know that on the southern edge, that's Butternut. It's only three houses long, and the inlet there is exceptionally narrow because there's a huge island in the middle of it, okay? Really important to keep that in your mind. Peak morning traffic, according to Lennar, coming out of this development is seventy-nine trips an hour. How are seventy-nine trips an hour going to fit there when you're also balancing the traffic that's already coming from the existing residents? Well, you might say, well, some of them are going to go up to the top there. But let's talk about that. That Autumn Woods Drive entrance, look at the short amount of space between Audubon and where they want to put that inlet into that neighborhood. Keep in mind that just off the top of that map is a multifamily housing unit. Keep also in mind, as we saw before, if you follow Autumn Woods around the curve, remember, we've got a whole nother two developments over there that would also be exiting there. So just looking at even what's there, how do we manage that at the peak times? It makes no sense for all of us that live there now. There isn't even a traffic light presently at the intersection of Autumn Woods Drive and Audubon. It is hard now to take a left turn out of there. Think of how much harder it's going to be as cars stack up to try to get out there and factor in the increased traffic coming out of Butternut, so there'll be even more flowing that way. What about the other streets? So that is a serious impact on its own. Now let's talk about the other streets. I want to point out, we raised this issue for Lennar, and Lennar's position is sort of, doesn't really think it's too much of an issue, they hope, they hope, they think, they're guessing, well, they said, well, they'll just go out onto Audubon. They'll just come down, they'll either go up to the top there, and they'll take a right turn, and they'll get onto Audubon. Or, they say, they'll go down the bottom, and they'll get to Butternut, and they'll go out that way. What the council members that are referencing is what we've all been talking about. That doesn't make any sense. That's already what is not happening. Here, let me explain why. I'd like to, with your permission, bring two more exhibits, which walk you through very clearly what we're talking about. Exhibit three and exhibit four has several pages. Now, if you could go, please, to exhibit four. I tried to use Google Maps to help show you, so if you will need exhibit four in front of you and next to it, exhibit three. Okay? It summarizes at the top the traffic volume, and then I want to explain to you this problem. Look at exhibit four A. The, at the top, marked A, and so what, for everybody else, at the very top of the concept plan, right as the development would exit out the top, I have put an A there, and I use Google Maps. Thirty-four hundred Autumn Woods Drive is the leasing office of that multifamily housing unit that you see right there. So it's essentially right there, right at that exit that they're proposing. If you're coming out of the proposed development, remember what I said about Autumn Woods and that short entrance there? You're coming out of this new Wagner Woods, you go up there, and maybe there are cars there really blocking it, or maybe there aren't. Either way, what I'm about to tell you is what we see all the time. They're not going to take a right turn and go onto Autumn Woods. Here's why. If they take a right turn, let's say they're going to Target or Home Depot or Cud Foods or their kids' schools, which will all be that way, because we know that, because that's where we live too. Instead of taking a right, if they take a right, it's two point four miles for them to get to all those places, and they have to go through three existing stoplights. And two of those stoplights, you can't skip with a right turn. And if a stoplight is added there for safety because of all this, they would skip four stoplights by taking a left-hand turn. And what happens if they take a left-hand turn? They're going to shoot through Autumn Woods Drive where there are no sidewalks, then they're going to cut over on Butternut in front of a park, I mean, I'm sorry, Acorn in front of a park, and they're going to come right out at Pioneer Middle School and take a right, and they will have skipped all the lights. And why do we think that's going to happen? Because it's what already happens. It's what the people in the multifamily thing do, and I get it, people can drive where they want to drive. Our neighbor could, we will handle the traffic that exists there now. We can work with you and we'll come back at another meeting, and we'll talk about how we want to handle that existing traffic. But don't give us six thousand one hundred and forty-six more cars and trucks a week who are going to make that decision, even if only half of them make that decision. That's three thousand more trips. Now, I want you to think about everybody and the rest of it, coming out the bottom, equally damaging to the neighborhood. So point B, if you look at exhibit four A, point B, that's the Mattson's house, that's twenty-nine oh six Butternut Drive. I could map from there, that's why I took it for you. Imagine Lennar is saying, okay, you know, a third or half of this development's going to exit out the bottom. Okay, they're coming out the bottom. Are they going to take that turn onto Butternut and wait on that short, narrow street? Take that right, then they'll have to take another right at another light. Then they'll be stopped potentially at the stoplight in front of the middle school, three lights. Why don't they just keep going straight? If they go straight on Ironwood Boulevard instead of going one point eight miles, or instead of going two miles, if they go all the way around, it's only one point eight miles, and guess what? It's only one stoplight, and you can skip that stoplight with a right turn. So, yes, the traffic now is frustrating. Some of it's high school, some of it's other stuff. I don't care about that right now, and we don't care about that right now. We'll talk about that with you on a different meeting. We all care deeply about six thousand one hundred and forty-six cars making either of those choices to skip all those lights. I can tell you, I sell real estate, I can tell you that what I tell my clients when they live on an impacted, busier road, the decrease in their home value of twelve to fifteen percent. So Lennar wants to talk about the increased tax base that's in there. I want to talk about the twelve to fifteen percent decrease that you're going to see all the way along Autumn Woods, all the way along Ironwood in Ashburn. These are real impacts that have got to be addressed before this would ever come to fruition. There are lots of neighborhoods, quality neighborhoods in this city where this is not an issue, we just have their own access in. And yes, I am meeting with the county commissioners and others, welcome any of you to come. Whoever wants to come, we'll meter it out, so there's no open meeting law stuff, okay? Because hogwash. Make them have their own entrance. That is part code and policy and a lot political will. And they can put it in there, or put a roundabout, or put something that makes this more sensible. Think of other quality neighborhoods where we have similar custom homes. The Town Course, Weston Ridge, all of this stuff. Drive around. They all, and I, not that you haven't, I know you do, but I'm just saying, for this point, they all just have one in and out. Make them have their own in and out. Autumn Woods East does, Autumn Woods South does. Every time this land was developed, the people that were sitting where you're sitting said, we have to make this make sense, let's make them have their own entrance. Now on to the Jonathan Association. There are two problems, um, here, well, there are a couple of problems here. As you can see, the entire Wagner land is surrounded by the Jonathan Association. You are looking at the residents who have upheld the value of not only their own neighborhoods, but the Wagner land. That land would not be worth that much if the Wagner family hadn't been great stewards of it, which certainly they were. But Lennar wouldn't want that land if all of us hadn't followed all the rules. We've paid for decades for the trails and the parks and the monuments. We've all followed the rules. Can't put up a chain link fence, you can't paste your house crazy colors, you can't leave your garbage out, you can't put your bark up, park your boat, et cetera, et cetera. But now, look at all those people along Autumn Woods and all those people on Timberview Trail and Butternut who had followed those rules for decades, and they're going to butt up to somebody who could break all of those rules. So I'm glad they're having good discussions on that, because they need to be part of the Jonathan Association. What are the other problems there? Well, it leads right into parks and trails, and a lot of you have mentioned this. You have a three-year-old, you live anywhere on the bottom third. You're telling me you're going to walk all the way up there? No, you're going to go down to the park, the two-point-five-acre park that's right below that Blue Basin, right next to that extension of Ironwood. And here's the thing, I would love to welcome new neighbors and see their kids play and have my kids play with them. It doesn't feel quite so good when they're pouring out of a neighborhood with not enough green space for their own neighborhood into parks and trails that we pay for, if they're not going to be part of it. But even if they are part of it, don't be lulled into complacency, I beg you. Two-point-five or two-point-six acres for a hundred and two homes with some crappy unbuildable land that's supposed to extend it? It's just not enough, it's a hundred and two homes. That two-point-five-acre park, it's right on the bottom there, that Jonathan Park, let me remind you, that serves sixty homes. That was decided to be sufficient for sixty homes. So, take the land. Take the land. I know that we, I had great conversations with Marshall, and I hear what Matt is saying. But you can't ever get the land back. I understand that the park may not happen for a while. I'll leave it to others on Julian and elsewhere, but I'll tell you what, I don't want that park if it means that we keep all those houses in there. If the choice is take more lots, take the lots. Take the land. Lennar has indicated no desire to listen to your comments so far, nor ours, regarding making this more similar. Take the land. We can figure out how to build a park. Or take more of the land and take some money, but don't take this more minimum amount. We know that you all have more experience balancing that piece, but we are begging you, that can't be undone once it's done. Tree preservation is the next category. The people that have lived surrounding this land are not allowed to cut down any trees. Autumn Woods East, uh, portions of Autumn Woods, all tree preservation. And in fact, one of the neighbors sent me, it is a tree preservation easement that runs with the land. So in nineteen, and I'll pass this along, I was trying to save some paper and trees. Um, I've just made one copy there, but we can have more if you'd like. In nineteen ninety-four, the city thought that that, the bottom portion of the land that abuts mostly to Timberview, the lot, um, so that whole southern border there. The city thought it was important enough that they created a tree preservation easement, which I'm going to pass through to you, which maybe you're already all familiar with. The residents that live there can't cut down the trees, they can't move dirt, they can't do anything. Nothing, zero things that would disturb any of those trees. Why then now, as the city, we would ask you, why would we let them cut down any trees over there? If it was that important in nineteen ninety-four, it's the same forest. Preserve more of those trees everywhere that you can. Why? This is not an unsolvable problem for Lennar. All they have to do is move the development out a little bit. Keep all those trees in that down, in that southwest corner. Save the hundred and thirty-one trees. There would just be a loss of not hardly any trees needed on this land if they did that and they preserved the trees along the Autumn Woods side as well. All they have to do is move it a little further over. What are the other significant issues? This construction access piece, I'm glad you're dialing into, it's extremely significant. Lennar has indicated to the neighborhood that the building could last three to four years. When we had the neighborhood meeting, Lennar indicated that they just, they weren't sure at the time where the access could be. Might be off Audubon, might be through the neighborhoods. The planning commission, uh, made it a condition that it would have to be off Audubon. We would ask that you keep that condition and strengthen it so that we don't run into this timing issue that was just discovered with the other development, for example. Because if they're using the existing roads and they're coming in on Butternut, well, we already talked about how, how those hoses are right there, and it's very narrow, so that will in, you know, add on to the congestion issues, but, but. Going on Butternut and you take a right, that's where the park is. That is the park for our whole development there. So to be driving right by there with construction stuff for two, three years, totally unacceptable. The buffering of trees and the increase in vegetation, I think some very specific direction to Lennar is needed, as you've all been mentioning. We don't have like-kind houses up next. This isn't like-kind at all. We are here, all of us, over fifty people online, all of the people here, we are asking for your help. We are ready to welcome new neighbors. But the cost of a development cannot be placed solely on the backs of the people who've lived there and solely to the benefit of those coming in. Everybody here and online invested in this area, picked it for their home, invested in this city, paid for the parks and the trails that you see currently, protected the trees, followed the rules, built and maintained quality homes, followed the association rules for the good of everybody. And we built a community. And when others were sitting where you're sitting, you can see the legacy of what they decided. And it is massively different than what you see there. And we ask you, we are begging you, bring your discretion, use the leverage that you have. It can't be that if it meets the whatever code that Lennar keeps saying it's two-point-three and we should all be happy about it, that it just gets to go forward, because otherwise, why would we all be here? Use your discretion, use that leverage, push back on them. We're asking for your help. Help us make sure that the proposed new development makes sense for everyone, makes sense for us and the new residents. That's how you build and sustain a community. That's how you build and sustain a community. Thank you.
Thanks Emily. For anyone that has something other than what Emily spoke in the above?
Mayor, I do have, there was one person with his hand raised online for.
Okay, so we have to be, we have to be mindful, you see hands here, but there's hands there, so we'll try to be, uh, able to bounce back and forth. So Kevin, go ahead with.
And before I get to Jeremy real quick, I do want to, someone did put a comment in the chat that, just to read into the record, so. Matt Douglas from, uh, 2857 Ironwood Boulevard. I fully agree with everything that Emily is saying about traffic patterns. I would ask that the city advocate for all of us, current taxpaying residents at the county level for an entrance exit directly onto Audubon Road. If for some reason an entrance exit does not get approved directly onto Audubon Road, I would hope the city would figure out how to close off several of the existing roads for access points into Autumn Woods and funnel our traffic from a substantially less dense community through the proposed highly dense Lennar community. From a safety standpoint, this only makes sense. Okay, there's the comment, and then Jeremy, um, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yep, thanks Kevin. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you for taking the time this evening to hold this forum on regards to the Wagner property development with Lennar. Uh, I'd like to open mainly for myself because this was new to me. Um, but in the 2040 comp plan, the city's mission statement stated is the primary mission of the city of Chaska is to enhance and maintain the high quality of life of its shareholders, the citizens of Chaska, which has been nurtured in the community since its inception in 1854. In front of you tonight and online this evening are those shareholders. Unfortunately, Josh, as great of a guy as he is, represents Lennar and Lennar is not a shareholder of the city of Chaska. These residents are. And Mr. Mayor, as you so eloquently pointed out this evening, this is simply a concept plan and we have the opportunity to make a difference and that's why you have members here tonight that are meeting with you and expressing their concerns and asking for your support. Liz, if you would, I sent you over an email shortly ago, if you, if you have that and could pull that up. Um, I'd like to just provide this for reference for the council. Part of this process is listening and all of you are elected officials, as am I. As the board president of the Jonathan Association, I was elected into my role and it is my responsibility to speak on behalf of the board of directors. I apologize that in the past wayward directors that are not elected into official positions have represented or misrepresented the association's intentions. It is our absolute intent to welcome new neighborhoods that make sense where we are developing. As was pointed out earlier tonight, members are dispositioned when we add in additional HOAs such as Sagewood, where now you have members enjoying Jonathan amenities that aren't contributing. Let me be clear. For over 50 years, the Jonathan Association has been great stewards of the land and great neighbors to John, to Chaska residents. We share our tot lots and our trail systems openly and we intend to continue to do so. When members bought into Autumn Woods East, this is what they were shown as the proposed development for the Wagner property. You can see on here, although it is not detailed, it was an idea, an expansion, the final version of what was to be the total master plan for Autumn Woods. It included a trail that ran throughout the community that would connect to that master planned park that would connect to Autumn Woods North. And this is what these members bought into. Along with all of the covenants as well as the easement agreements, they entered in with the city to protect and be stewards of the land. These developers, while we didn't necessarily know that a national developer would come in um, and similarly develop this as Autumn Woods South, as Emily so eloquently pointed out earlier this evening, there are standards that were upheld and when a developer like Lennar can partner with the Jonathan Association, we can address things in this concept phase, which is very important to call out, to make sure that there are public spaces, greenways, trail systems that connect, that make sense for the entire community. As we've gone through these public forums, one thing has been evidently clear to me and that is unfortunately, as this neighborhood has grown and as the surrounding neighborhoods have grown and traffic has increased, the Jonathan Association has a responsibility in this as well. We have to hear our members when they are saying there are safety concerns on Autumn Woods Drive that have not yet been addressed because of the lack of trail system, because of the lack of sidewalks, and it is a real problem and the Jonathan Board will be taking it up tomorrow as agenda item B under new business. And we will go to these members and we will come to you as the city and we will find a solution for this safety concern. But how this ties into what we're talking about tonight is exactly what the master plan calls for and that is finding a like-home development for this area and protecting these shareholders that are in front of you this evening. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your thoughts and I open it up to any questions that you might have.
I mean, I, I, you know, that's, that's a great plan, but that was, I don't know, the date. You know, the problem is, is that it wasn't sold. So it, they're really, I don't know what, I mean, that was probably a hopeful plan by someone. So I mean, it's really nothing we can, I mean, it'd be great if that was the plan, but we, that's not the plan.
So you're, you're absolutely right. And I, again, I, I would just reiterate that I bring this to you simply as a visual, a point of inspiration, if you will, in the concept phase that we are in in this development and what could be of a development of like and similar homes.
All right, thanks.
All right, uh, Mr. Lundgren, I think you were the first one on ICU in the back, so we'll just kind of bounce back and forth Doug.
Mark Lundgren, 3075 Autumn Woods Drive. Been a resident of Chaska for about 32 years when I built that house there. And I don't want to echo a lot of what Emily said because she's done it very eloquently and she's right on the money for all of us. I know that the mayor and Commissioner Hong talked a little bit about the West End. And I can give you an example of the density. You can see the interior density. The lots on the West End there and which would be 57 through 64 on their diagram. It would be the same thing as if you woke up tomorrow morning, you went to your backyard, the house that was there is gone and now they're going to put two of them there. Those are less than half the square footage of the adjoining properties. I brought that up at first with them and I was told that the definition of similar has changed over 40 years since we built. Leander Petty, Mr. Winchell knows well, would tell you that similar is identical, equal, close or consistent. That makes sense. This is none of that. You get two dogs in this fight. You got a lot of taxpayers that have been good citizens, have done what you've asked, what Jonathan's asked, paid taxes. And you've got another dog in this fight, you control the north entrance. That's, they have to purchase property from you to control that northern entrance. As I understand it. So you've got a couple of things that you can negotiate with here, I think. And we'd really like to see the density factor taken down, which again will control and help control the traffic factor. Please consider some of the history and the people that are there and what they've done as opposed to a developer who's just going to come in and what they can do for you now. And boy, do I wish it was the guy that bought the sconced woods that bought this property. Watching the presentation of that before, we would welcome something like that with those custom homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We still good there? Anybody there?
Two people with their hand raised, but if, we do have two people with their hand raised online, but if you wanted to call on someone else here first, that's.
All right, I'll go, I'll go to the gentleman back there and then we'll go, we'll go to online.
My name is David Taylor. I am at, uh, 2893 Forest Ridge. An Chaska residence for about 30 years, moved into this neighborhood, 19 years ago. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We absolutely loved it. When we first drove through and looked at it, as we're driving by, everybody waved. And that was kind of weird, you know, everybody we saw, driving or walking waved at us. It was very welcoming, very, very impressed by the neighborhood. One thing that I want to touch on here is Lennar is here to make money. They're a business, they're a corporation. They are here for a profit. They want to maximize their profit. To maximize their profit, they're going to maximize density. They're going to come in with the most dense plan possible to maximize their income. The donated parkland that they talk about is this stuff with a slope that's totally unusable. Because they can't use it either, but they think that's a donation that helps them, um, take unusable land and make a profit by giving it to the city to, for a park. Not really in the best interest of the neighborhood or the city for that. They're going to come in here, they're going to make as much money as they can and they're going to leave. We live here. This is not our business, this is our life. This is where we come home from our business to enjoy our life. It's Josh's job to, to come in and make this high-density plan a reality. His job is to come in here and try to make everything look like it's going to be great, try to grease the skids to make this happen. I don't agree with the way that they're pushing this. We've all worked hard, all the residents here. We have doctors, lawyers, entrepreneurs, business persons, CEOs of companies, consultants, all work here. They have worked really, really hard to achieve this neighborhood and where they live. I don't want to see a company like Lennar come in and take that down a notch or two or three. I think we have all worked really, really hard to get where we're at. This wasn't my first home. I worked long and hard to get to where I'm at now. This is a concept plan. I think it's a severely flawed concept plan, given the density. You saw the model, it was up there a few moments ago. That shows something that is like and similar to what we have right now. I think that is what we need to strive for in this. I think Emily has hit almost all of the other topics here very eloquently. One thing to keep in mind is on Autumn Woods Drive, there is no sidewalk. In the wintertime, that can be very dangerous. Something we could probably take up at another point. But there's also an unwritten sign on the corner of Acorn that says, "Stop optional." If you ever go by there, stop and watch. All the traffic goes by there. When they're turning right from Autumn Woods onto Audubon, they roll right through that over and over again. So adding more traffic on that, it's going to be a little more scary. But I just want to thank you all. And, um, hope you make a great decision tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Kevin, let's go, somebody on the phone.
Um, Janine, feel free to unmute. Janine, you're, there you go.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Janie Sealy Smith. My husband Gary, I live at 2935 Autumn Woods Drive. And we have been here, uh, for almost 37 years. I think that we are the oldest resident, uh, represented here tonight. We have, uh, we were the fourth or fifth house built in here. Uh, my concern, of course, is Autumn Woods Drive along, and with all of our neighborhood, all of Autumn Woods. Autumn Woods Drive especially is almost as if we lived here and, and raised our children here, a pedestrian boulevard. And to this day, I almost equate it as that. You will see bikers and, uh, and boarders and roller skates and, and people walking, couples walking, their dogs and singles walking, teenagers. I mean, this is a very active road. And without the, again, without sidewalks, this has been a road that people walk right down the middle of all of the time. You're not walking on the side because there is no sidewalk. But my, my other point that I wanted to make tonight is that I have been, uh, a CEO of a nonprofit in, within the housing community for over three decades. And we have worked, not the same clients, but we have worked with low-income clients. And I am just shaking my head at a developer who would build that much density without any thought of at least 175 to 200 children moving in. And that you have homes that do not have parks, do not have a community, does not have public transportation, does not have a place where families are going to gather, where people can be together. These are homes right stacked right next to each other, causing high-stress neighborhoods when that happens. And I don't see any type of, of, uh, thought of how those families are going to come together. Especially those families that are backed up to Audubon. That's going to be a dangerous area. Um, when you have families that close, a lot of things happen. And the kids are gathered together, there's just a lot of stress in those type of neighborhoods where everything is right next to each other. They hop over fences. I have lived in supportive housing, working with Common Bond and other affordable housing, Project Right, we're living. My own development that we have for women and children. And there's no one that builds these places out thinking first, how are those families going to survive with the children? What will make this place better? So I am just disappointed in any developer that comes in to a community without looking, "How do I make this community more engaged? How do I add to it? How do I make it better? Not worse." And if that's, a developer is not going to do it, then we will have to depend on our representatives and our public, our elected officials to make sure that that happens. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Doug? Oh, we had one more and then.
All right, go ahead with that one, yeah.
Uh, we had Genevieve. Genevieve, you can unmute. There you go.
Thank you, council members and my fellow neighbors. I am very inspired and humbled by this community, just in general. I'm probably one of the newest people on the block. Uh, oh, sorry, I'm, uh, at 2925 Autumn Woods Drive. Uh, sometimes I forget to mention that. Um, we're truly inspired by what we saw here. Um, I'll give you my impression because I have 15 pages of notes of concerns, which I'm going to condense down to two minutes because so many points have been brought up and I fully support Emily and all of my neighbors on every point they've made so far. I'll try to limit it to just three or to five of whatever I can fit in, in just a couple of moments here. So I see this as an opportunity for Lennar to, actually, when I look at this development, it's actually a flagship of Chaska. It's going to be what people see. When Andrew and I first came into this neighborhood to view the home that we are going to buy at here, 2925, we only looked at one home before we put in our offer. Now, as we drove down, um, what was it, Highway 5? And we didn't know that that's where Prince's Estate and we didn't know about Hazelton, we didn't know about any of this. But what happened to us is when we turned onto Autumn Woods Drive, after Andrew and I had just cringed at looking at the developments, is that's exactly the type of lifestyle that we were trying to get away from. Apartment houses, detached apartment houses. Uh, we wanted single-family houses, but we want single-family houses that actually have amenities. Um, I've lived in 10 different types of apartment, uh, living situations. Um, it said that the average American moves every five years and houses are sold every seven years. That isn't the case in Autumn Woods Drive. My neighbors have been here for 30, 35 years. You can't get into this section of the original neighborhood because they don't put their houses for sale. They try to get their families to move here. When I moved here, I thought immediately, "Oh my goodness, I should get my mother to move here." We did take grandpa, he is living here with us. But the thing is, is when we turned the corner onto Autumn Woods Drive and we started on that windy road, we knew instantly that this place was something like we've never seen. Now, after we bought the house, we found out and we started researching the history and the history. If you read about Jonathan and Chaska and how the original city and the, uh, association even developed, it's amazing. And Autumn Woods was always meant to be a part of that. Um, from what I understand in the original plan. And the thing is, is, so then that Jonathan, as I've been reading, I read several clips. Jonathan embodies an evolving vision of livable, sustainable communities. Taking it, you know, things that we take for granted, like open space and walking paths and such. This was visionary for when it was actually created and it's truly inspiring. Now, I didn't know that before we got into the community of all the amenities and assets that are being offered. But one of my biggest concerns is that once in Chaska, as we were trying to get our move and sell three homes, we also took on an apartment um, for a year so that we could really find the perfect place to live. And again, we only viewed one house before we put in an offer. But we lived in an apartment place that had a hundred and fifty families. But I have to tell you, they had countless amenities, countless gathering spaces, countless everything. And we were, we were in this apartment when COVID hit and the sheltering in place hit and when everything hit. Um, and I felt bad because I've been a homeowner since nineteen ninety-nine. I felt bad for everybody who had to be living in such a confined space with nowhere to go and nothing to do. Um, at least in my own backyard, I could garden and such. But it does seem to be that um there's an opportunity for Lennar because now when we came in, we cringed at these places. Well, I didn't know that that was actually Chan Hassan. But I want people to look over at Chaska and I want them to have that wow factor when they see the new flagship of Chaska sitting right there on Audubon, which is going to be the new entrance to Autumn Woods. I want that to have a wall, a wow factor, not a wall factor. I don't want to just see um a big community literally offering nothing to a likeness into a similar neighborhood. So um, thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, Doug.
Most of the points I wanted to make have already been mentioned, I just want to reiterate a few things.
Doug, if you would, for our record, do you name an address, please?
Uh, my name is Doug Shone, I live at three zero nine five Autumn Woods Drive. I, I urge you all to please adopt all of the conditions that the planning commission put forth and don't deviate from them whatsoever. In particular, the very first one, which says access to the new development shall be provided. They deliberated over the word shall versus the word should. At first it was brought up, it, it should have an entrance to the Audubon Road. They deliberated, they gave it a lot of thought. Please realize if you didn't listen to their meeting that night, that was a very salient point that shall be provided, please do not take that out of there. They have to have that. In addition, unless I missed it, I don't think they said that you needed a gate, their entrance to Audubon or to um Autumn Woods Drive and to Butternut. If you leave those access points in there, I can virtually guarantee you that everyone that heads west, the target run, the schools, the quick trip, if they don't go down either Butternut or Autumn Wood, if you give them access, they will return that way. Guaranteed. All those cars we keep talking about will appear on our streets. I have walked my dog for thirty-four years on Autumn Woods Drive. I know that street very well. Just to be clear, I didn't have the same dog for thirty-four years, I don't have the oldest dog. It's been a different dog. But I have walked the street for thirty-four years, so I know it very well. That north entrance, you don't really realize if you're coming in from Audubon that it's a residential street. It's conducive to speed, it rises, it descends, it rises again, it curves, it winds, it twists. The sight lines are not good. If you drive it right now with all the trees out, you cannot see that much further ahead of you. There's constantly during the daylight hours, someone walking, someone walking their dog, some young mother pushing her stroller down the street. I have done it myself, I'm totally cognizant of all the people that walk our street. It's been said, we do not have sidewalks, we walk on the street. I have missed it. I've had to all of a sudden hit the brake. I'm very, very cognizant of driving twenty-five miles an hour or less. I know people drive more than that. Because when I look to the north after I've noticed somebody that I think is speeding, I see the brake lights come on three, four hundred feet before they make that turn around the, the, the top end of my neighborhood, they're going down towards Julian. So I know that people speed, not deliberately, it's conducive to speed. That road is just fun to drive. I've got a neighbor that lives, or pardon me, a friend that lives in Carver. I said, I see your car coming through our neighborhood all the time. Oh, I just love coming through your neighborhood. So I know there are people that know about our street and enjoy driving down our street. We are very lucky. We know we're lucky. But other people enjoy what we have as well. Some are very good about it, they're conscientious drivers, some are not. Some of the ones that are not is the guy that drove down our street sixty miles an hour and leveled our mail station, cut off the six-by-six post, thank God that wasn't a human being. I found a Corvette, stolen Corvette at five-thirty in the morning, parked up against a tree on the Boulevard. I've picked up numerous empty alcohol bottles along that stretch from my house, I live on the north end of Autumn Woods, up towards uh Audubon. People that are drinking and driving come through our, that little section, get rid of their alcohol bottles and continue on down. So there is very clear evidence to me that there's a lot of people that drive down our street other than just the residents. Some of them, I'm happy to have them drive through if they're, if they're conscientious about it, some of them are not. We don't want any more people on our street because Lennar can't figure out a way to get in and out of their development. I, I, I don't care if Lennar builds a development. By the way, if you look on uh Conwood Eleven uh in Victoria, you'll note that Lennar has several developments, one has very large homes with very large lots. Why can't they propose something like that? I think that would be a better idea. The other thing, um, as far as the drive-throughs, I just want to bring it up. At some point that the Degler Farm to the north of us in Audubon will be developed, that's going to impose more traffic on Audubon, forcing perhaps more people to drive through our neighborhood to get rid of the stoplights, that's been brought up. I don't want to keep reiterating all these things. But, but I don't think that's been mentioned. So that's all I have, you've been here long enough, thank you very kindly for listening and paying attention.
Uh, I'm going to go in the way in the back, Emily, you've already spoke once, so I want to give everybody an opportunity. Yep.
Well, good evening, Mayor and the City Council Members. My name is Gretchen Kleinsauser and I live at twenty-eight sixty-eight Ironwood Boulevard. I'm here to speak on behalf of parents of young children. First of all, I think it's interesting to note that we picked this neighborhood less than two years ago after looking all over this county because I'm a current principal in this district and feel strongly to be a resident and a member of the students and the stakeholders that I serve. And this neighborhood actually stuck out because of the space and the safety. And I think it's important to note that um others who are looking to move here, that is something that they're looking at. And having a young child as well as watching in the mornings that traffic, it's considerable when there's five different bus stops that happen on Ironwood Boulevard. And that's multiple kids from private schools, there's two private schools and three public elementary schools that serve that area and that street. And we're so excited there'll be more kids here in our district, but that will also increase the traffic. And I think of the traffic and that amount of cars passing when those kids are five years to eleven years old and there are parents and there are dogs. And I think it's important to, when you're looking at that traffic study, to take into account, talk to the school district, talk to the private schools that have bus routes on there. Because my guess is with this neighborhood here, that will only increase, and that's a Jonathan-bound um neighborhood, so keeping that in mind. I think also it's important to note the parks. We love the parks, the kids love them. Um, it's a great way to meet people, build those friendships and build a sense of community. And we want to share those, um, but we want to do that safely with um the Jonathan Association. I think too, as you review the traffic study, that is important, right? Like it tells a story and it gives us our next step or our next decision. And with that, I think it's important to note that that traffic, the high schoolers that are going between Chaska High School and Chan Hassan High School, two of our three high schools in this um county, um Eastern Carver County Schools, they're not going just to lunch, they're going to courses back and forth. So part of their school and their options to provide an awesome education for kids here, um, they can attend those at both high schools. So I think that's important, it's not just lunch traffic, it's actual like course traffic. Um, and I would also encourage you, when you review the traffic study, to make sure that that traffic study is not done on a Wednesday. That is a remote learning day, and so there were, there will be like no high school traffic on that day. So make sure that that occurs prior um to June ninth, which is the last day of school, and it's not reviewed on a Wednesday. Um, just some more information for you. Um, thank you again for your time, you have the power to make the decision and we um entrust that to you, so thank you.
Kevin, you got anybody there?
Do, yep, uh, Lee Isaacson. You can unmute.
Hi there, my name's Lee Isaacson at twenty-nine eighty Autumn Woods Drive. A lot of people have really good points, I'm not going to keep hammering the same thing. My first thing I wanted to ask, and this is a question that I would like Josh to answer specifically, has Josh even walked around our neighborhood one time? Has he been on Autumn Woods Drive on his own two feet? Has he watched cars whip through there? Does he know why everybody's here? Does he know that ninety-three percent of the people signed that, the other seven percent were probably at happy hour? A hundred percent is against this, everybody's here online, wasting their time, doing all this stuff because we all care. There's a lot of smart, successful people in these neighborhoods. I've actually gotten a little closer through these meetings, I'm very thankful for that, to learn about some of the reasons that other people are living here, but me specifically, it's because I love walking my dog. My wife saw it right away, she's like, we need to live here, that's it. I know every single car that drives through the neighborhood pretty much. I'm right on the straightaway, I know who is who, I know where they live. And it's for better or worse, we know most of the cars that come through here. If you build like the proposed plan, you're trapping everybody who's on Autumn Woods Drive. And I said it in the other meeting and I wasn't joking around, it's something that I won't stand for, I won't be around to see it developed. But you know, it's, who cares if I'm here or not? But every single homeowner of this neighborhood is trying to include Lennar. We're not trying to make it into the have and the have-nots, we're not trying to not include them. We want them to be in our community, we want them to be a part of the Jonathan Association. And we want them to be as part of the pre-established, we're at Hazelton Golf Course. It's one of the most prestigious golf courses in the United States. How's it going to look when they're holding the Ryder Cup in twenty-twenty-nine and they do a blimp view? And there's eight, there's yards like mine that are an acre and a half. And then you have this giant zit called Lennar on the top of what we're looking at. It doesn't look right, it's not, it's causing every... A giant eye store, um, I don't know what else you'd call it from that type of thing. I don't know why they don't want to join a part of our community. We're asking them to adhere to the guidelines that make sense and fits in with the community that we're doing. We're not trying to ask for anything that, that's out of balance here. No one's fabricating or imagining what Lennar is about, we're all smart people. I, every time I drive the Chaska Town Course and play golf, I see that they built places five feet from the railroad tracks. All we're trying to do is see what Lennar is doing. They have not offered to change anything, not one thing since our proposed meeting from last time, where I spent four and a half hours sitting there listening to Josh. And we get it, we're business people, we understand. But at the same time, we're just trying to include them, I would ask for them to be respectful and try to include us in their plans. Thank you for your time, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thanks. I think we're going to take two more, I think we're starting to kind of hit on the same topics. I know Emily, you had your hand up. You're good? I got Emily and then I'm going to take that, the gal in the back after Emily.
There is one other person with their hand raised online, so I don't know.
We'll see how long here, we'll, you're going to start limiting.
And I do, sorry, real sorry, real quick, sorry, just because I can see online. Um, I know Josh also wanted to go last as well as, so.
Josh wanted to what?
Josh from Lennar wanted to go last.
Just quickly, sometimes when there's a precedent elsewhere in Chaska, it's helpful to think about um that we're not asking for something that's a unicorn. So when we're saying just one entrance into that new development there, uh, don't connect Butternut, don't give them that land. Uh, look at, when you have time and I'll just, and perhaps you're all familiar with it, but the Bavaria Hills neighborhood, I just have two of this big map here. You'll see that it's a large development, it only has one way in. And it was intended at one point to connect up to the other neighborhood, but that was determined to be a terrible idea. It terminates at the park that is there. This would be exactly the same, terminating at the park, don't connect it, give them their own entrance. The only thing I want to make a point about is that I think Lennar is saying, listen, we've got this busier road, so we're going to put this less expensive, really dense product next to it because that's how we have to sell it. I want you to look around Chaska, that's actually not true. Think of the Bella Vista neighborhood. So you're on your way to the town course, you're on Pioneer, you pass the town course, that next right turn. You all, but you probably all know that neighborhood as you think about it. It's that really private, that big, those tall arborettes, that green shield kind of. What does that do? That creates, it's pretty, right? And it creates privacy. On the other side of that, there are homes that are selling right now, today, for six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars and they back up to Pioneer. Pioneer is just as fast as Audubon. This can be done, Lennar can do it, they can make profit on those homes. There's precedent within Chaska to make this better. Thank you.
Isn't that where people drive over grass?
Yes, it is. I, I would say that uh this is my ward and that is a problem, so I don't...
Well, I don't know how they would drive over the Butternut into the park, is my point.
I know, I'm just saying that this, I did not sit on the council at this time, I door-knocked this neighborhood, this is, this was not, this wouldn't, this wouldn't have been something I would have voted on.
I was also confused because I think generally I've spoken to a lot of you and pretty reasonable, but that it seemed like we just shifted to don't give them any access. So I'm greatly confused because that was not at all the message I got until two minutes ago.
Oh, what?
To not give them access. At first it was wrong in our neighborhood, and then I feel like we just swift shifted to make them drive across.
Well, that's a fair point, I mean, but if they have their own entire entrance, right? I guess we're all trying to understand what's the point of the other entrances, okay? But if they have their own entrance and then they're also coming out one of the other ones, um, we still have to think about the secondary cut-through traffic problem. So I think you felt that shift and that was real because we feel like if they have their own entrance, it solves all the problems, right? We understand that that might not work for all of you, but if they have their own entrance, um, that solves, and, and it doesn't connect, all the problem solved.
It solves all the problems, even though there's problems existing today that you guys have all spoken about.
That's, yes, because...
It solves those problems that already exist, you're saying that that solves them.
All the new problems.
Talk about the sidewalk, lack of sidewalk.
Cutting through, the cutting through is still there.
So there's two...
It adds in, it just adds in.
So what we're saying is, we have a problem right now that we would like to come back and deal, Jonathan wants to speak about it with us, and we will want to talk about it with you on another time. So there's an existing problem of some volume there and cut-through that we're experiencing. We can live with, with other, um, maybe some speed bumps, maybe some additional uh stop signs. We can live with that volume. When you take what we have right now and potentially add in another six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-six, whatever it is, volume to that, that's the secondary big issue that we're dealing with. But I hear what you're saying, you can't say you want to welcome them, but then don't let them in at all. What we're trying to say though is if they only had their own entrance, it solves the volume problem that would add on to our existing problem. Okay? But if you're saying that doesn't make sense to me, just force them to have their own entrance and then maybe there's one of the two other entrances. And then we still have to deal with the cut-through problem because that's still going to happen.
Excuse me, real quick, you, you, you do have to...
Third back there.
So, so that's what I think, that's what we're trying to mold here. And I understand what you're saying, and I think there's a balance there. But I'm just trying to say, we're just trying to say, we have an existing traffic problem that gets massively out of control if you connect their development in the way that they're suggesting with the number of houses that they're suggesting. Does that answer your concern?
I mean, the answer is very nice. I take issue with the narrative switching from everything that's been said to me in the last two weeks, numerous phone calls that I've taken time for, which I'm happy to do, but to switch the narrative. To me, when uh Ironwood going through helps alleviate some of the problem, so all those cars going down Autumn Woods right now that are bypassing everything going down Autumn Woods, having two at least is a little better. I still think there should be at least, at least a right-in, right-out in this neighborhood to help with some of the traffic. But to not connect Ironwood, I would take issue with. You're probably not going to get a vote for that from me.
Because you feel like it doesn't connect the developments in a way that makes sense to you, is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Right, and honestly, I really do think that some of the problem you see on Autumn Woods today would even be slightly, and you can disagree with me, I realize I don't live here, I live on a busy street, so I do know what it's like. Um, would be alleviated by having more roads in place.
So I guess what I was...
Another 100 homes.
What I was trying to explain about the cut-through that happens on Autumn Woods, it's also something we already experience on Ironwood. Okay? And so I guess I was just trying to point out that they're both already an issue. And so that increased volume coming out of the neighborhood will exacerbate a problem that we already see. I hear what you're saying, that you think that even if it has its own entrance, it needs to connect in some other ways. And so I think that if you manage the volume issue, that helps all of us. But I think we're feeling a little bit back against the wall when we look at this. And so that's when you're hearing the level of frustration and concern. So I hope that addresses your question.
And what I meant, we can't hear, can't hear the recording of you, so that's all right.
I spoke out of turn as well, but I just, I wanted, my name is Meredith Salmy-Bidelech. I'm at 2850 Timberview Trail. I've been a resident for three years. I just wanted to speak to your point about welcoming. Our neighborhood is walked and bike ridden by lots of neighboring neighborhoods. We welcome them. It's so fun to see people who aren't in our immediate neighborhood experiencing the beauty of our neighborhood for sure. We want to connect our neighborhood with trails to this new neighborhood. We want to be able to use their playground, invite them over to use our playground. So I think we're talking about two separate issues between traffic and safety, and making sure that our neighborhood stays safe, especially for all of the young kids. And still being welcoming to, for people to walk and just experience the beauty of our side of Chaska. So I just wanted to be clear that, yes, we welcome new neighbors. It's just a matter of keeping car traffic safe in our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. And you can sit back down. I'm going to speak to concur with Councilmember Hatfield's thoughts. The narrative shifted with some of your comments and with some of the online comments, coming from the perspective of, these are lower-valued homes. They're not going to bring in the type of neighbors that we would like living by us. I don't live in your neighborhood. I'm just saying, as an outside perspective, I am not emotionally charged over this issue. I understand why everyone in the room is. I understand that. But I'm just putting that out there, that I was getting that sense and feeling as well. So I think it's really good to be clear about what we're saying.
Let's, okay, we're going to go down, we're going to, because we're kind of starting to circle around here. And we might be here tomorrow if we don't start looking at a, try to end this. There's one on the, online there that we're going to look at, and then we'll take one more in the audience, and then I think we're going to call it. Unless something, and then we got to talk, and then Josh needs a comment yet. So go ahead, Kevin.
And I also just wanted to also ask, I did also receive a few written comments in the chat, if you'd want me to read those into the record as well, once we're kind of done with the speaking portion, I can. I have them saved, so. But I'll let, I'll let you think on that. Kara, you are up.
Hi, this is Mark Strazanti. I live on Forest Ridge. And I just want to be real quick and just mention about the park that's at the connection of Butternut and the safety of the children. For me, as a resident, I look out at that park every day, and there are dozens of kids at that park. So I just want to make sure the city council is cognizant of the number of cars and the safety issues that it could pose to the kids in the park. You know, as a city council member, the safety of our children, I think, would be at the forefront of everything we think about in this community. And running that many cars past that park, to me, as someone who watches it every day, I think would be a concern. So I just want to make sure when we're looking at the entrances and exits and the different options, that not only the park, but the mailboxes right there also, where a large number of homes in this community go to get their mail every day, right at that entrance as well. So I just want to make sure we're taking that into consideration, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and there's one in the back, and then I think we're going to listen to Josh.
Hi, I'm Nicole Loading, 2867 Ironwood Boulevard. I've been there four years now. Just make it super quick. I've got three young kids, one, five, and seven, three little boys. To speak to the parks, I just really want to emphasize that in addition to the park equipment, open fields are really, really great for kids. And as they get older, they can play kickball, they can play tag there, they can play soccer, they can play catch with a football. You can put a basketball court in. I mean, so there's a lot you can do with this space. So I would really say when you're thinking about that 10%, get as much land as you can. The kids will use it. They don't need expensive, and even if the equipment is cool, really, the open space is really, really valuable. And we see that every day in our neighborhood parks, the Jonathan ones. Just in Autumn Woods East, just real quick again with the safety, there's probably at least 40 kids that are less than 10 that are just in that Autumn Woods East section. There's a lot of little kids that are on the road, scootering, biking. So really, again, the traffic piece is super important. The last thing I just wanted to say is, I appreciate the thoughtfulness going into livability and quality of life. I'm a physician. I've been in practice for 12 years. People are suffering this year more than ever before. And if there's a place where they can be restored and have support from their neighbors and have a sense of belonging in their community, it has a really big difference for people's health. And I think this is a place where, you know, this Lennar concept, you know, maybe would be very suitable and great for another piece of land, but I think we can do better for our piece of land. And for those residents that are moving in and for the current residents. So thanks for your time. Thanks for your thoughtfulness and all the next steps, too.
Thank you. All right, let's bring Josh on.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I just want to, no real additional comments, just wanted to close by saying, you know, that it seems like there's a sense that I'm not, or Lennar is not listening. You know, it's unfortunate that that's the sense people are getting. This is, you know, part of Chaska's process. Not every city offers a concept plan review process in advance of preliminary plat application. For us, we actually welcome it. It's helpful. Because when you get to the preliminary plat stage, it's a lot of time and money investment in planning and coordination that, you know, by going through this concept plan process, it helps us inform a better preliminary plat submittal. We are listening. I've been returning emails that I've received. I've been returning phone calls that I've received from the neighborhood. We will be taking comments from the neighborhood, from the park board, from the planning commission, and from the city council. We've already got, I've got a spreadsheet that's eight sheets long now. Where we've been listening, we're going to meet further with city staff, with county staff, to try to rework this plan a little bit. We will do what we can to, you know, address as many concerns as we can. We will not be able to meet every concern that's been voiced this evening or previous tonight. But as mentioned, we will be working on it with city staff and with the county. Try to, you know, make as many compromises as we are willing to or able to make and still make this community work. So that's, is all part of the process. We're still early in the process, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, your couple of comments you have?
Yes. All right. All right. I apologize if I pronounced any of your names wrong. Melissa Stoffer from 2871 Ironwood Boulevard. I just want to echo my neighbor's statements and concerns. I am the resident who hates their house, but purchased the home because of the lot and overall neighborhood. I have lived all over the country and have never loved another place like we do here. Please do not allow this special gem to be tarnished by Lennar's concept plan. All right, and then from Joanna Douglas. One of my concerns with the proposed, oh, sorry, 2857 Ironwood Boulevard. One of my concerns with the proposed development by Lennar is that has nearly as many homes as all three Autumn Woods neighborhoods combined on nearly one-third of the size of the Lamb plat, which means that it does not match or nearly come close to the surrounding neighborhoods. My main concerns is the fact that they don't have their own entrance and exit. The possible addition of this large neighborhood would mean there will be roughly at least, you know, 6,000 more cars going in and out of our neighborhood. Josh from Lennar gave us the statistic that because of the added extra traffic every 40 seconds during higher traffic, a car will be driving down our street, which means every 40 seconds, a car will be passing our children while they play outside, passing our kiddos as they stand and wait to get on the bus to go to school or hopping off the bus to walk home. Obviously, this has a huge safety concern for our children. Thank you. And then the last one from Genevieve, or it's actually from Jack Looma and Andrew Armstrong, 2925 Autumn Woods Drive. We agree with Emily and the neighborhood concerns being voiced tonight. The residents have raised their families and built their legacies here. Our entire way of life is being jeopardized by this type of development and does not meet the vision of what was and has been built here. We're replacing safety, tranquility, and privacy for noise, pollution, higher crime density, sirens, and traffic, which is all against the original plan.
That's all?
Well, I think I got some as I was speaking those, but if you want me to read those in as well, I can.
I mean, they're really hitting on the same things we've already really heard about. Unless there's something there that's completely different than what we've heard tonight. That we're, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing.
I mean, I can copy them and.
Trying to kind of bring this all in, okay. So a number of the items were added conditions in planning commission, right? So I'll go over some of the highlights here, so because I want to make sure that, you know, everyone's on the same page here, right? So let's just start with the, okay, so item number 23 is a traffic study that would be submitted at preliminary submittal. Direct, number 24 is direct access to County Road 15, which is Autobahn. Number 25 is provision of trail continuity of Jonathan Association, Autumn Woods. 26 is to include Wagner Woods Development into Jonathan Association, right? So check, right? Number 27 is provision of construction access to come directly off County Road 15, which developer agreed was okay, too. And Jonathan as well. Number 28 is provision that Wagner Woods Development be more reflective of the characteristics of trail streets, open space, and layouts of Autumn Woods Development. And then 29, which is provision of parkland implemented into development, not as a fee to the city. Okay, so those are what's in there now. That's in there. So I'm, so what I have is, I have a number of other items that kind of came out from this. That what I'm going to do is, I'd like to just kind of run this by my colleagues here up in council. If it makes sense to you, then we'll put in some of these, and if there's not a lot of agreement on it, then we won't put it in. Fair? So one is to make sure that the new homes blend in. This is kind of strengthening number condition 28. And so I think that the mayor made a comment about some of the homes and lots 55 to 65, because they have that double width product type, right? So strengthening condition number 28. How do you guys feel about that? Add as a condition, or? Would you guys be willing to add?
I agree with number 28, but I.
I mean, is there, is there something we could, that you guys would want to do to kind of strengthen number 28? So like in terms of, you know, reduce, you know, stating about reduced density or something? Because that's the one thing it doesn't really say.
Is that what you're kind of suggesting is that? Or are you suggesting more buffering or landscaping?
One, both. And just putting it out there is an open, you know, is an open thought, right? But I mean, I'm open to both because I think that, you know, the more buffering would be good. You know, especially, you know, and especially within the neighborhood. But, you know, a little lower density would probably help, too, right? Assuming if you have a lower density, but.
I am in support of what you were asking for, Councilmember Long.
So Mayor, Councilmember Hatfield, Councilwoman Grau?
Yeah, I support that message. I mean, I think there's an opportunity for Lennar to diversify product. You know, I don't, it's easy, the easy answer is to say, we'll just take less houses out of there. I don't necessarily know that that has to exactly happen. However, it's probably hard to remedy some of those solutions without doing that, right? But there may be creative ways to do that. I just think it needs to blend, right? I worry about, you know, I think it's a very visual statement that you mentioned. Like, all of a sudden, that one house is two houses upstairs and ads. And that, that, there's just such a direct juxtaposition of that reality on that order. You know, that product into that development, it all blends, it blends more, right? So I think that makes sense to me. You know, if it's bigger lots there, then you really have three products. And I think, you know, when we talk about sales and diversity of sales, right? That's an advantage, too, right, to have that. So I don't think that's, I don't view that as a negative to them either. Now, I'm not in that business, but that's just my two cents.
I'm fine with, I still think the blending is the word more than.
So, and so you agree, okay. So maybe it's like, so my proposal for is that provision of Wagner Woods Development, the blending be more reflective of the characteristics, and then there's examples given, and then of trail streets, open space, and lot layouts, and maybe would everyone be willing to put like density slash space or buffering to as other examples?
Does lot layouts already say? I mean, I don't want to be redundant.
It's a buffering?
She's saying it's redundant to say. Lot layouts, which to me says.
Versus density is different than lot layouts, so.
The trail piece, but I'm not sure where other trails are to even hook up. Because I, there's.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm a little confused about the trail connections, because there's, I know there's a few in there, but they're, they're not. I don't know where they, where they could possibly hook to this neighborhood. I mean, this neighborhood has sidewalks all over. You know, the one thing I'm clearly hearing is, is maybe Autumn Woods needs sidewalks. But I'm not sure how to, where to do the connections, so that's just a part I'm not sure of.
Trail piece gets answered by the push, the provision of being in the Jonathan Association, because they address, they ultimately will address a lot of that.
One of the challenges that's going to be out there, we could see it when we went out there before, is there's not a ton of Jonathan connections out there now. There's connections between like that tot lot on the south, and there's a cul-de-sac neighborhood to the east or west. There's not a lot of places you could put new connections in there because of private property. I think connecting what's there into a neighborhood, I think is probably the direction Jonathan, I would assume is, how Jonathan Association would want to address that is to make sure it's connected to the rest of the neighborhood. But there's not a ton of opportunities, except for a long, like the road right away, as you get sort of north on Autumn Woods Drive. There's not a lot of right-of-way anywhere else in the neighborhood to do that.
So how about, so for the verbiage, right? So a provision of Wagner Woods Development blending be more development, be more reflective, and blend the characteristics of the trail streets, open space, and lot layouts of Autumn Woods Development. Everyone okay with that? Okay, so that's the first one. Got that, guys? Yep, okay, okay. Got it, Liz? Okay, so I didn't know she was like.
Before you go to the next one, the one that was already mentioned, that I just want, I think we can just circle back to, because I will say that, you know, to me, I posed the question of the park, what to do with that park. You know, the variation between what the park board said and what the planning commission said. And we posed that question, and it's a good sample size, you know, the question, we hear it. It sounds like they want the land, and so that is consistent to what is already in the contingencies with the planning commission.
So.
So I just want to state that to see if others agree, because that's.
That was the next, that's the next one I was going to do.
Take the 10%.
Take the full 10%. I think I was going to propose, like, basically revising number 29 to say the parkland implemented to the full 10% development, so it's very specific, right? I mean, so what do you guys think? Because that's what I clearly, I clearly heard, that I didn't hear anything otherwise say take less from the residents.
Yeah, I'm just listening. I mean, I told you my opinions on what was presented about the park, and that's my Marshall Grange Park, my park days. You know, I think parks and green space are important, and I just, I'm still frustrated that what was on the concept plan, but we won't go there again. But again, a lot of times when we plan parks and the park board looks at that, they'll ask the community. Right now, some of this is hard because you don't, you're not asking because you're not dealing it right now. It's kind of pre-community. But I, you know, I can't argue with that. Once you lose the land, you lose the land. It's a fair argument to make.
I'm, I'm going to go with what the park, park board said. I mean, there, there are slated experts at what we should be doing and I'm going to follow what the park board said. Which I believe is the three lots.
Yeah. It was taking the three lots, was that? Because I feel like the park board said two point six five, but the planning commission said take the full ten.
Yep.
That's, that's correct.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm saying follow what the park board, they're the, they're the resident experts. That's what I'm, that's my opinion. You know.
I, I feel like part of the park situation really falls on the Jonathan Association. Because in my, in my opinion, this name, this tot lot that's located right kind of right off of Butternut. You know, I want, you know, with this neighborhood coming in, I want them to be able to, you know, know that they're part of Jonathan and they can use that park. That park's located there. And then because I, I'm not, I understand now listening why we have the north part designated for the park. But I was not a fan of that location. And I know in one of the meetings it was mentioned, the, you know, wooded areas and ticks and things like that and that being, you know, and that's, that is a concern of mine. My, my son got limes from playing in a wooded park. So, you know, but I understand why we have that there and I'm, if the Jonathan, if they're going into the Jonathan Association, knowing that that they have access and, you know, to that park. Not saying that you would deny access, but that they, that they're part of the Jonathan Association and they're able to use that South Park, so.
I know my, my opinion is that the, the park is for that, it's a neighborhood park for that neighborhood and that community. And if these are, you already have a good chunk of the people who are going to be users of that park right next to it and they're here tonight, right? And they're clearly, the message was, once you have the, if, if you take the money versus the land, you might never see the money again, but you'll for sure always have the land. Right? And I think that's the, I think that's the, it was a very clear message. And I kind of feel like, well, the, the people we need to be listening to are the people who are right here in front of us because they're the ones who are going to look at the park, walk to the park, use the park, take their kids to the park on a regular basis.
I mean, there's nothing to do there.
Even said, you know, one of the residents themselves said, that's okay. I mean.
Das did say he's could speak to the park dedication if you would like to have him weigh in.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, let's, let's figure this out. What we're going to do here first before, because it's city land. Can't have Jonathan put the park on it because then who takes care of it? So you, you gotta have that figured out. So either, either it's our land and our park or it's not at all.
At this point, do we decide who's, whether it's Jonathan's or theirs, or just that there has to be a certain amount of land?
We have limits on what we can do with parkland dedication. So I mean, if.
We can't, we can't give it away. That's right.
Just give away from our dedication site.
So it's, it, that makes it challenging that, I mean, Jonathan can say that they're going to put a park there, but it's our land.
Yeah, unless John, unless Jonathan buys it from the city and or something because, because you can't, because it's a law, it's a statute.
Can't do that.
Statutory dedication.
It's just.
City, it becomes city park and then we're responsible for putting anything on it because, yeah.
Right.
Years and years.
I mean, and it, it kind of goes back to any neighborhood park is usually the land is purchased and the equipment is purchased via the neighborhood. Now you take this property and you take all ten percent of it. And now it gets spread across the community for when that might be, I don't know. I mean, that, so. You know, now you have, say it doesn't become Jonathan. Now where's everyone going to go?
Well, I, I, I think it's a valid point and, and I, but I also think you can define a park that doesn't have playground equipment. But I mean, that's, that's, that's to me is that lens, right? Like, a park can have playground equipment and that is our typical pattern, but you know, I, again, I'm just trying to balance what I've heard versus my experiences too. And it, it's a very valid point. I, I, I don't.
We've got a park that's got a very large grassy area and I mean, I've been around it a lot. I'm sorry, but I rarely see anybody in there. They're at the playground, but they're not at the playground or at the large grassy area. So I, I mean, to me, a neighborhood park is a playground area. And maybe I'm old school and, and don't get it, but that's the way I look at it at a neighborhood park. And that the idea is that you walk to it, you go out for a little stroll, let's go play on the swings or slides and, and, and we'll go home a little bit. I mean, it's not like, it's not like a community park or, you know, where you're driving to and you're, you know, you're parking and whatever. This is, this, these are designed as a walk up and, and enjoy it. I mean, so, and like I said, we, as Matt says, statutorily, if we take the parkland, we have to own it. So.
The first time we've taken ten percent and waited for years to develop a park. I mean, that, that's been an experience in the past. We've had a couple neighborhoods. You know, it tends to be a little bit more challenging to go and put those parks in later because people sort of get used to what's there and, and.
Where we're sitting here now, all of a sudden you change what was there that I like the open place, you know, so I. I don't know. That's just.
Is there like a, a splitting the different, this, there is like, because the park board said like two point six or something like that. And then take the rest as dedication to fund that. But is there maybe something like a little bit even in between those two to say like, take a little bit more and then I'll take a little bit less, but still have some equipment in there or something? I don't know.
You can take that ten percent no matter, whatever way we want to. The only thing I would suggest is don't ever take land that's unusable. But, but the, but we can take that mix any way we want to. It can be a cash and loo or it can be a land donation. We're limited to ten percent and yeah, I mean, it, 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 it can be done either way. I mean, that's, I mean, we've done it, you know, different ways in the past, you know. One thing that, you know, we've tried to do is to, to look at this to say, how do we, you know, is it possible to build a park at the same time you're, or playground? I mean, you're right, John, you can have a park without a playground too. But, you know, we are trying to look at a scenario of saying, how do you build a playground at the same time that the, the development's going forward and actually have a funding mechanism for it? But that doesn't mean that's the way we have to do it. I mean, we, we can take any mixture of that ten percent.
Because I mean, I, I mean, because I, I know that the desires of the residents is to take a larger, a larger plot of land. But I understand there's also then, you know, that need, that practical need to have something on it to, you know, that sort of defines it as a park. But it certainly gravitates towards what the, what the residents of the community want because that's, they're the ones who live with it or be next to it every day.
Well, I'm sure the reason for the taking the most land reduces the density. And, and, I mean, I, I'm, I'm going to throw this out here is that if Josh is true to his word that he's been listening, I, I'd really like to see what he's going to do. I mean, he's clearly heard that this is not a likable solution by like nobody. And it's like, come back with something different. And we're sitting here trying to debate what he's going to come back with.
Let him tell us.
But there's, I think there's still a question that, that staff asked us to answer, which was, you know, whether it's ten percent or, or the dedication or whatever it was.
To make sure.
Need to answer that now?
So if, if, so the, the memo says two point six five acres and it also says, and to omit lots fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five.
That would be the park.
So and that's the park, but how percentage wise, where do, where do we land with, with that then, like?
I don't know, Marshall. Do you remember the percentage? Point five nine percent of it would be land dedication and then the rest would be cash. If you went with what the park board said.
I could say, Mayor, is that if we kept the provision of the recommendation of the park board with the challenge you laid on the table, and I think we've all laid on the table tonight of an acceptable plan that addresses these issues. And that, you know, that density decreases, product increases, options increase. Then I do think you're probably right where you lose some of the strain on the, let's just take the land because we want to boost the density. Now, the risk there is, is that we keep the provision in as, as the park board recommended. Preliminary comes back and we voted no because we don't like what we see, right? That's an option.
It's an option.
Absolutely.
I mean, we don't know. So there was a meeting proposed tomorrow on the county road. Well, maybe all of a sudden they decided right in and right out is okay. So now what does that do? So I mean, that, that's the reason for a concept plan is to look at it, hear the comments, the concerns. But you have to go to the next phase to see what happens.
You know, I'll, an example of, of a development that we saw, I don't know, nine months ago, Sagewood Three. And there was some pretty strong comments and, and opinions that people had as part of that. And I can tell you that since that time period, we've had lots of discussions with the developer. I think they clearly heard what the, what the direction was. And I think the concept that you'll see or the preliminary you see coming back, if it goes in the direction that's being talked now, is going to very much address the, the concerns that, that you have. And I guess my only point of saying that is, you know, my experience has been if the developer doesn't listen to the comments and doesn't come back with something that reflects what comments were put in, that's why you have the preliminary stage, just like you said, John, to say, hey, if, if we feel they're not listening to us, we don't have to approve this.
Well, and I think that there's a good example of Lennar listening and specifically Josh in the when we wanted, I can't remember the name of it, Lakewood, what's the name of the one we just did a few months ago? Where we wanted a tot lot. What was it?
Pioneer Vista.
Thank, thank you. Pioneer Vista, where there was no tot lot. You guys were very adamant, I didn't care so much you about this tot lot. And what there's a tot, but you know, there are examples of where it's been listened to. And I kind of would like to hear what Josh has to say about the park. He might tell us he's going to put eight in and we're limiting him to one. He's not going to say that, but I mean.
I don't think it was Josh that wanted to talk on the park. It was Jeremy from Jonathan.
Well, Josh had his hand raised, but, and then Jeremy raised his hand as well. So you could have them both, I guess, speak to that if you'd like.
Gosh, that's what I.
You want to hear from Josh and put Josh on?
He's going to put eight parks up, I don't know.
Is it, is it possible? I did actually forget one comment to read in. And I apologize, I missed the gentleman's name when I read the other comments. You mind if I just read it in real quick?
It's fine.
I don't think I could sleep if I didn't, so. I want to make sure I'm fair. It's from Timothy Foster from twenty-eight seventy-nine Ironwood Boulevard. The city should not have to pay for the traffic study, but the engineer or a company that performs the study should be independent and possibly chosen by the city. All right, now Josh, you wanted Josh to go first or Jeremy?
Josh.
Josh?
All right, thank you. So I was just going to provide input. It was discussed earlier, there was questions going around on what the dollar amount would be for a cash contribution in addition to the land dedication. So right now with the proposed two point six five acres of land dedication, the remainder of the cash contribution would be, and this is a number coming from Marshall Grange, approximately one hundred and seventy thousand. So just a, a dollar amount there for you to, you know, help guide your.
To give you a sense of, of what that means. So when we're doing our Cortina Woods Park now, that's about a hundred and, hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we're replacing all the park, playground, park equipment there. And then, you know, it's, it's a redo of that park. But, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons that was sort of that balance is to say, to feel confident that you could go in and actually have enough to be able to build that playground.
Well, let's listen to what Jeremy has to say.
Yeah, thank you. I, my, my thought of just hearing this, and I want to be clear that I would, I would make this comment representative of any HOA regardless of the Jonathan. I think that there's opportunity here for you, for the council to set the ten percent and take the land and to push back to Lennar to say, take that land then and figure out the best use, similar to what is done in, in other developments where there is part of the land and I'll, I'll use Cloverfield as, as really a precedence. So there's Juliette Park that is Jonathan owned. And then directly across the road, there's Walden Park that is a neighborhood park. Very little amenities, but a trail through it and some park benches. And then the Jonathan has invested about fifty thousand in equipment. In this neighborhood specifically for, for like, because we, we have invested this last year. We've put up about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to redo Acorn Park. And we're currently putting in about fifty thousand at Ironwood and Butternut this summer. So I think there's just, there may be a compromise here. You might be getting down into the weeds in the concept phase. I would encourage you to take the ten percent and then encourage Josh. And if he does join the Jonathan Association, let's work together to figure out how we're going to use that ten percent.
Well, I, I, I think we need to be clear though, that ten percent is a statutory dedication that's made to the city. So, you know, it's, we have to retain ownership of that and it, it has to be used for parkland purposes. We can't go give it to another, I mean, that's, that's not a lot.
So is it a lot?
Say to, to Lennar, just to clarify my question, you couldn't tell Lennar, we'll happily take five. And you keep five for your HOA, whether you join the Jonathan or not for a tot lot?
We can, if we took five, then we take five as cash.
And not as land?
No, I mean, that's our, our statutory authority is to be able to take ten percent of land or ten percent of cash and loo. But we can't, we have to retain that permanently as the city. You know, then it's our responsibility to develop it or those types of things. We can take a mixture of it, but we can't take the land that's dedicated and transfer it to, to another ownership.
Right. What I'm saying is, is take your dedication and also as a condition, put on Lennar for the HOA to keep a portion of parkland as well to meet that total ten percent of the development. As park space.
I guess I'm, I'm not following.
Well, he's basically saying that we, we would not get the cash part of it. He's saying, take five percent and have Lennar take the other five percent and make it. Well, I think just make it open dedication space. And I don't even know if that's legal.
I, I don't think so. I mean, that's. I'll research. I mean, we can research it, but I don't, I don't think we can do.
Is that what you're saying, Jeremy? Because that's the way I read it.
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that you're, I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is it, what I'm hearing you guys really struggle with is how much should we take to be able to build on and provide amenities on? What I'm saying is, is there's other areas in Chaska where the HOA, regardless of if it's Jonathan or not, the HOA has a park and the city has a park right next to it. Why can't this development be treated the same where you're not worried? You can take a lot of land for the city park and leave little land for the HOA to build a tot lot.
Well, we can't take the land for the HOA to build a tot lot.
Oh, I know. I'm not saying that.
I think what you're saying is take the land, we'll build the park somewhere in there because we're the association. Yep. I, the only caution I'd have of that is that, you know, associations can choose at any time to not be in the park business. You know, they, like Jonathan Association owns a lot of land and they can really never sort of get rid of that land because of the coven center, but they could choose at some point to say, we're not going to rebuild a playground in there. I mean, we saw a decade ago, the Jonathan Association went through some pretty big turmoil. And, you know, that's the risk that you run. And that's one of the reasons that we've said in the areas around the community that if we're going to be equitable for people in the community, we need. that if we're going to be equitable for people in the community, we need to put a, we need to put a city park within uh, you know, because people pay to, you know, for meeting our policy of being a half mile of the city park. Or a, you know, a walkable distance of a city park. The only way we can control that is if we actually own and build the park ourselves.
Well, I'll emphasize when I change my mind, because I'm allowed to do that. I am comfortable with what going, with the park board proposed with the hope and understanding that we will see a blended fit into neighborhood less diver, or less density um preliminary plan. And then that way you potentially, the hope would be, is you get a nice park with money to fund the equipment immediately. And you address the overall density concern, which connects to the traffic concern, which connects to the entrance concern. Which to me is kind of the root of the concerns, right? And I'm, I'm fair with that, right? With the understanding that the risk there is like stated, like if, if we don't think it's been presented and to address those issues, you know, it could be voted, it could give, I mean, I, I'll speak for myself, I could vote no in that preliminary plan. So, that's restating my thoughts on what to do with the park board, with the park land.
I concur with Councilmember Grau. I'd like there to be playground equipment at the park. I, yeah, I, I think that that would be beneficial. But I think having the largest amount of space while still having playground equipment is something that I would desire.
So that means.
That that was what the park board created and made a decision on.
Okay, so that means that, you know, thereby there'd be three votes, right? Mayor, Councilmember Hubbard, Councilmember Grau, who would all be in favor of that, so, I mean.
Yeah. That as well. I think that it's really expensive to go to the preliminary plan and then not do everything we've been very clear that we want. So I would think Josh is a smart man and is not going to do that. So um, I would want, I can just hear the calls about a, no park equipment being there and just trying to find a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to put a park there randomly when we could have just do it the correct way and also be confident that Lennar is listening and to our density concerns and is not going to put a ton of money into furthering their plans with not listening to that when we can very much say no then, so.
Okay, so that said, you know, I'm clearly going to be outvoted on this particular one, but we should probably amend that to, I mean, it's, that's just life, right? I mean, but we should probably, yes.
This is all about an opinion and we all have our opinions and I, I mean, we, we ran it through the park board as our people that are, that's the business, that's their business. And um I guess I, I would feel awkward if we didn't follow what the park board said.
I'm all for listening for, to residents, but I think part of that is taking the knowledge that we've spent years in these seats accumulating and seeing examples, as Matt mentioned, of where a park doesn't happen for years and years and years and taking that knowledge and doing what we can with it, so.
So reopening it to the entire group again, my gut tells me that that's a little bit of the best of both worlds. If they deliver a park that has funds to put equipment in there and we solve the other concerns, I think they're okay with that. I think a few of them, maybe individuals who had children here tonight, that I think was awesome that they were here. Um, but that's what they want, right? I think the concern that I have, you know, listening through all this conversation is that that was a way to out potentially influence that, to the density of it, right? But if you can get the best of both worlds, again, I'm speaking for everyone in the room who can't speak now, so I apologize for that, but I think that is a little bit of the best of both worlds. You're going to get some equipment and hopefully we see a plan that's more presentable.
So I, so, I mean, so I'm still recommending the change to the, to item twenty-nine because I mean, just, I mean, just the pragmatic piece, I just want to move on, right? I'm going to get outvoted on this anyway, but that's the consensus among council is that, you know, to have the parkland implemented um as, uh was it the two point six acres plus the dedication fee, right? That's the recommendation of what park board is.
Five with the rest being cash dedication.
Yep. I mean, I.
What's a, you, you know, and this might be a Marshall question. Is, is that an average neighborhood park? Two point six five acres?
He said in, oh, yeah, you're here.
This needs a little bit more explanation because it's not just the two point six five acres, because we own the land around there too.
I mean, that's, that's the part that.
Hard choke by actually having a plan uh there, but it, well.
Well, and I mentioned this in the, the park board meeting too, you know, the, the true definition of a, a neighborhood park according to the National Park and Record Recreation Association is generally three to fifteen acres. And that's how they classify them. And then, you know, then you go to more of what you were referring to earlier as a community park. You know, those are typically twenty-five to fifty acres. So this is again on the low end, um but like Matt said, keeping in mind it is abutting against some existing land. Now, the, I, I think the other thing that I would say in my observation of being here in Chaska is we do refer to a lot of our neighborhood parks as neighborhood parks that are smaller than this. And so I think it's really about how is it, i- is it an appropriate size and is the shape? Are we maximizing the shape to be as usable as possible? Um, you know, to service the people in the area. And I think especially if this uh neighborhood becomes part of Jonathan, you know, you got three parks now per, w- w- pretty much within a quarter mile, you know, triangular now. Um, so there's plenty of parks to be had in this area. Plus you got Shadow Woods a little south of there. And then not ideal to cross, to cross Autobahn. But there are a couple of really nice parks over in Chanhassen as well. So within that area, there's quite a bit of park space that's um, that's walkable. And so I think we were trying to kind of factor all that in, but it's hard when at the park board level, we didn't know all the ins and outs of is this going to be Jonathan or not? And you can't really, you know, factor that as we're reviewing uh the concept plan at the time. But um, those were some of the things, some of the thought processes we were thinking about and and I know you guys already talked about location as well, but.
But just even if it becomes a Jo, even if it becomes part of Jonathan, that would still be our park, obviously, if we take the parkland dedication.
Coming throughout Jonathan where, you know, y- you will see areas where um, you know, there's a tot lot that's, you know, a block or two away from a city park. It's not, it's not an uncommon thing to see. It was actually one of the discussions on the flip side that we had when Jonathan was going through all the challenges there is that we were asked to take their tot lots. And what we said at the time is it wasn't fair to the rest of the city that doesn't have that uh because there would be parks too close. You know, there's, there's definitely a higher density of, of playground space in Jonathan than there is anywhere else in the community.
And I, I don't know if Jeremy is still listening, but I thought I heard him say in the planning commission meeting that this would be the location that they would put the park. Um, so again, thinking about the current existing parks and then also servicing the existing neighborhood up in that northwest area. Um, I think that was the thought process and.
Still question, so the, the proposed park at like two point six nine acres or whatever is what would be the park dedication? And then there's cash that goes along with it, but it's adjacent to other city land. And that's all included, let's say it becomes part of that park, what's then that actual park space that usually would actually be? Because that's not what, because the, you know, you're not going to end it there because you have that adjacent space, right? So what, how big would it actually be? Do we think it would be roughly?
I mean, not a whole lot bigger, to be honest. I mean, because there is obviously that steep slope. Um, just, just northeast of there. Um, but I think there's that right of way along the road and then there's still a little bit to the north. Um, but I think gives it that look and feel of being bigger than just the two point six five uh acres there.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably in that three acre.
Three, three, yeah.
There's more of the perception because you're not, because it wouldn't end at houses, it would end at like this kind of hilly surface, right?
Number of acres we own right now up there in that little section is uh map acres is three point six four.
Yeah, so, some of it, if you go out there, some of it's not really usable. So that's, that's where I don't, I, I think you'd get right around three acres of probably usable land. Um, but there's, the farther you get over, it's steeper slopes and then there gets to be wetland a little bit farther in.
Okay, just for the sake of, you know, wrapping up this point, I mean, the, the general consensus among council is to, you know, to do the two point six nine acres plus the cash to be able to fund the park. So just amend the condition twenty-nine to represent that.
What does it say now?
Having this an option in the resolution?
Okay, so just use that, use that Liz's option with that, with the park, the, the park board recommendation option, okay?
And you're comfortable with that? I mean, that's what the park board discussed and that's.
I think two point six five acres of, of uh usable park i- is plenty of space to have a playground and still some nice uh green space area.
That would be based on using those three lots.
Yep.
And so the par, so the park would be right next to the road. And then you feel that there's city land there that can get a trail out to um Autumn Woods?
So what we'd be looking at is we'd have to create an access off of Autumn Woods. Residents, uh the existing residents to be able to access. Um, and I think there would be opportunity for a trail um on the, it'd be the east and south side of Autumn Woods.
Uh, I was out there and I was trying to look for an access and I'm not, you know, I didn't get out and walk.
And there's an existing trail on the north side of Autumn Woods coming off of Autobahn and it just kind of dead ends, so I don't know.
Down in the low spot.
I don't know what the plan was there, but we could continue that and make a cross or look at um installing a trail on the city owned side, on the south side.
All, all we really, I mean, we just need to make the access to the road and then it just, then it's back to free for all on the road. Right? I mean, we're not going to put in, there's no point in putting a crosswalk or anything like that, because there's nothing anywhere else, there's no sidewalks to tie it to.
Yeah, I think we, I think we do want to be cautious about where we end that, the.
I mean, you, you do want to, but I mean, I don't know, what do you do after that with no sidewalks?
Well, maybe not sidewalks, but I think there needs to probably be some signage. You know, there probably needs to be maybe some, you know, a paint in the road. Generally steering people. I mean, the park is an invitation, so we just want to make sure we're factoring in.
Guess we'll have to look at it when we get that far. I mean, we got to get there first, so.
Okay, so, I was going to just move to the next item, yep. So, you're Marshall. You're Marshall. Um, and the next one was that we were talking about the traffic study earlier. I don't think there was any contention about the traffic study, but it was just to add um to amend item number twenty-nine to also include that school traffic needs to be taken into account.
Yeah, we, we have that down as a note.
And so just, you know, amend that, so it's just clear that we have to take school traffic into account. And that's including daytime school, just like the, I don't know whether we call it like the classroom or.
Not a Wednesday.
Yeah, not a Wednesday, not a Wednesday, and that uh daytime traffic. Okay, so that's what, so that's what I'm putting out there on the table. Okay? Everyone's okay with that?
So are you making, so you're saying that's a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one for concept plan for Wagner Woods, um PC number twenty twenty-one, number ten, and I'd like to also make a comment to um to Josh.
Before you start commenting.
Yep, so.
So a motion from Councilmember uh, on, is there a second?
I can second that.
Second by Councilmember Grau, now comments. Go ahead.
Of course, so that, so, you know, I think we've had similar conversations in the past uh with other, with other developers. But one of the things that's really important to me as a council member is to see the developer working in collaboration with the people who are adjacent to it, who will be the new neighbors of the new community members who enter the community. Because as developers go, most developers will develop and then move on. But I fully expect that by preliminary plating, if in order to earn my vote, I want to hear that the community members are going to be okay with this, right? I mean, they may not be super thrilled with every single nuance of this, but they'll be okay with it and say, yeah, this will work for us. And that's my expectation, and that will earn my vote in preliminary.
I make a comment just um for two things, two comments about this. One, just because some of you, this might be the first time, it might be the last time you interact with the city council situation. Um, for me, it's on a concept plan. I have, I'll just be honest, I've never voted no on a concept plan yet, and it would be very hard for me to do so. Because I do believe in the feedback approach and listening, right? Now, I think it's been very clear, I made it very clear that I haven't liked this concept and if we were going to get close to getting that first no vote, it could have been this situation. But I, but I, but we've had history. We, we, I've, I know Josh, he's been here before. I, I trust that he's listening and I heard that, and I, I know that you maybe expressed, the community expressed maybe that you didn't feel like you were listening. And the proof will show up in the preliminary plan, right? Uh, so just wanted to say that, because uh I know that maybe some of you hoped tonight that the concept plan would have gotten voted down or went to gone further. Uh, but for me, the concept plan is exactly what that word means, concept, right? And, and getting the feedback and getting the understanding and, and I think we've made it pretty clear on kind of what our thoughts were. Um, and then finally, just thank you, right? I, I've talked to you on the phone, I've talked to individuals. I just appreciate, even though it, it is eleven-thirty at this point, um, this is government, right? This is their process, getting involved. I love seeing the kids in the, in the room, um, getting the process. Hopefully they're in bed now, they're not watching on TVs, mom was on the camera, right? Um, you know, type of thing, but it just, it's good to get involved because uh, you know, sitting on this side of the table sometimes after the fact when decisions get made, we hear about it. And it's kind of like, but there was no one out there, right? And I'll, I always tell people, I'm never going to agree with everything that's ever said, but I'm going to respect your opinion and respect the decision because you showed up, you spoke, you spent way longer than you probably hoped you were going to spend tonight talking to us. But just wanted to say thank you and appreciate that.
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll make my, my comments. Um, I had the wonderful pleasure of driving through your neighborhood on multiple occasions over this last weekend as I was reviewing the um proposal and just really seeing the culture and vibe of your neighborhood. You have a, you have a beautiful neighborhood. I know that um, you know, whatever does get proposed and, and ends up being in here, I know that you guys will all be wonderful welcoming neighbors to your, your neighbors that will be in there. Um, I think it's a quality of life issue, not only for you as existing members of this community, but I also think that it's a quality of life issue for the people that will be buying these homes. And, you know, we, we've touched on so many of these things. And I, even as I sit here and look at this, this, you know, layout, I worry about even just on-street parking with that row of homes off that mainway. And so I'm going to vote no, just as a record of indication that I, I did not like what I see. But I, I am listening and I'm open to seeing what the preliminary plan comes back as. Um, I'm, I know that Lennar is going to work really hard and that they've. I'm, I know that Lennar is going to work really hard and that they've taken all of the notes and that they're going to put forward a great preliminary plan. So, those are my comments.
I agree with everything I said, I think it's important, I agree with council member Gra, this is concept. And the, I like that we have this, it gives Lennar a chance to hear from the residents and from us what we want to see in preliminary. Like I said, it's expensive to go to preliminary, there's, it costs a lot of money to do all that, so I expect and I agree that I will have no problem voting no if we don't see a change in what this is. But I appreciate all the residents, you put my millennial anxiety to the test these last two weeks by calling me, I loved it, but I also had to have like a half hour anxiety attack every time I called back, so. But I, it is helpful to hear from the residents, that is the only way for us to represent you well, is to hear from you what you want, so thank you to everyone. I know there were some today that I didn't get back to, I had a busy Monday. But certainly at our, when this comes back to preliminary, I can't even speak anymore tonight, preliminary, that please do the same thing again and let us, when the council packet comes, if you have a chance to look at it, let us know what you think, like I said, that's the only way for us to represent you well, is to know what you're thinking. So thank you for all the time you guys have spent emailing and calling, I do appreciate that, but I, like I said, I have seen Lennar listen to us before, I'm expectant and hopeful they will again. So, yeah, that's what I had to say.
Thanks. And I'll just close out, I I just, I hope that, you know, I I too say, you know, thank you to everyone to get involved. I met with Mark long before I even knew anything was happening there, Mark told me about it. And I hope people now understand that when I say I don't know anything about it, that's the process. It starts with the neighborhood and then it works its way through, through, in this particular case, park board planning, and then it comes to council. So generally, we see this last compared to everybody else. So I hope you realize that that's how these, how this system works for us. And I talked to Emily since the very beginning and my comment has always been, you need to get involved and you have been involved and that's important, you know? And the comments, and like I said, I I think it's pretty clear up here how everybody feels about it. And hopefully, when we see something come back, I'm going to vote in favor of this, I'm the same way. You can't see what the next step is if you don't vote this in. If you vote this out, it could change things, because then they might go, we're not going to do it, then Wagner's come back to us and said, you denied what's perfectly within the the boundaries of what we can do. So I need to see what's next and like people have said here, if there's not, you know, some significant changes here, they're, they're probably not going to be voting in favor of it. And as a developer, there's no point in bringing a proposal forward if you already know ahead of time that the council's not really going to be in favor of it your preliminary and like Josh spoke earlier, once you start getting into preliminaries, there's a lot of cost put into this. So they got to put in there, but he, he's had to have listened to what's happened here, so. I, I just want to say thank you, I want to commend everyone for being respectful all the way around, everybody was good, that's perfect. A lot of people have hung in here for a long, long night, so. With that, I'm just going to go ahead and move forward and call for the vote and see where it goes, so. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion, last call?
Just one comment, so, you know, in, I think it's often representative that of things that, of like this where there's strong community feedback, but usually there's one of us who may vote nay and for different reasons. And I think it's good and it's a healthy part of the process, because it does send a strong message to the developer to say, hey, we're not completely on board. I think a couple of us has actually stated that they haven't, it's not a, the preliminary is not a rubber stamp, just to go through. We're going to look at the preliminary, we want to hear back from you. We want to see what it looks like and we're expecting there's going to be some substantial changes. And, you know, I know that staff works really closely with developer to make sure that those changes are implemented and everything on that list gets addressed. So, you know, my, my understanding is this is not over, remember, there's like two big steps in the process ahead of us. There's the preliminary plating, that we'll see the major changes, and then after that, there's another series of meetings for final plating. So, a couple more opportunities, but the next one's going to be really important, because that's where, if there's significant changes, that's where they're really going to take place. So encourage everyone to continue to be involved and thank you, because I've been in your shoes before. So I very much understand exactly where you're coming from, so we are here, that's why we, that's why we're here.
All right, anyone else last call? All right, I'll in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, so passes four to one. So, all right, we'll see you whenever that preliminary comes back. Thanks everyone for being here.
Can I just add one comment, you know? Tell that, this concept is here is just saying, hey, we're going to develop this property in single-family homes, you know? That's about it, with all the other things that went on tonight. The developer knows that when he comes with his preliminary, there better be significant changes. And Eric does have, has some more comments that we didn't put in, but can you just say, have him put that off the record? So if you guys want to listen to some of the other comments that were made, that it's part of the record, right now it is not.
He can cop, he can copy and send them to us, right?
I mean, so it becomes part of the official record. Pardon?
Has more?
On the Zoom app, comment.
I can't talk to you, huh?
You can do it, yeah.
I got, I still got a meeting to go. You'll have to call me or email me or. Have a good night, everybody. Hi, Jan.
What, thank you.
All right.
Kevin, you can just, you can just give.
Can we let Marshall go home too?
Marshall, you can go home too. All right, I'm going to keep going here. All right, we had bills, some of them want to make a motion to pay the bills.
Just a couple of quick ones, and I'll, I'll a couple of quick ones and we'll call it done.
You picked the wrong meeting to work.
Okay.
The wrong meeting to work. So you should have called me, I'd have told you.
So on page six, there's the item for ultimate safety concepts, new air packs and masks, assume those are for fire department, right?
Yes.
Yep, so there's just a curiosity question, how much does it actually get us? I mean, is it for all the crews, full replacement, or is it, you know, is it like every year, every couple of years or every 10 years? Is it for the entire crew or is it, okay?
It's a full, because there are technology change, if you start having some and not others. It's, it's, it can be challenging and can be dangerous, so.
Significant enhancement of these is that it has really good communication in the mask, which has been really a challenge for them and fires in the past, so. So it, I'd say it not only meets the air quality, but it also, safety wise, allows them to communicate better in the fire.
You know, we struggle with masks in here. Now put it on and escalate that noise by, by tenfold and try to understand what people are saying.
Council meeting.
All you hear, that's what you hear.
Every once in a while.
And now they have that enhanced voice, voice, whatever they're called. But yeah, they're supposedly like state of the art right now.
And everything, that's cool tech. Okay, and the last question is page 26. On, under Northland Systems, there's a third line item, it's vulnerability service agreement. So I'm wondering what's covered under that vulnerability service agreement? Because I'm an IT guy, so.
Otherwise I wouldn't understand it, so.
You still don't understand it, you're just reading it.
It's a regular monthly billing for active scanning of data ports. To detect possible vulnerabilities includes reporting on status and findings. It was renewed on April 30th and now reflects a new monthly amount after deletion of services identified as no longer needed by IT staff. And Northland's going to turn into Exergent soon, apparently they just bought them all, so.
Okay, so, so they said we're no longer, so this is the end of it, or is that the way I understood?
No, this, they have a, this represents a new service after they took out some of the stuff they didn't need anymore.
Oh, gotcha, so this is like the new streamlined version of it, this is what we're focusing on, just that, the port.
Stuff we need.
Just basically port scanning vulnerabilities, okay, got it, okay, sounds good, that's all I have.
Then I need a motion to pay the bills.
Move.
Motion by council member Wong.
Two seconds.
Second by council member Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, Nate, we call roll.
Over Hatfield.
Yes.
Council member Hubbard.
Yes.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
Council member Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes, moves us to other business, council member Hatfield.
Top on Thursday, sorry, this battery is dead, but I guess it doesn't matter, no one's here. Copy with the cap on Thursday, Memorial Day, I think you had 10, it's 10:30. It's 10:30. I don't remember who's event on Facebook, but I'll put it up tonight or tomorrow.
10:30?
Well, that's what Commander Van Iel told me, I emailed him a flyer I made and he said 10:30.
Told me 10 too, but.
I think I heard 10 as well, but.
Okay, one second.
I'll be with the, I'll be showing up with the group, because I right now go to visit cemeteries. So I'll show up when they show up.
Yeah.
So I don't have to worry too much, but I thought it was 10 o'clock. That's the way our cemetery visits always play out.
Great, the only change is the time, it will be held at 10:30, that's what he said to me four days ago.
It's changed, okay.
Because I don't want time to stop, getting into that.
10:15.
I know, I really didn't get, like I changed the flyer from 10 to 10:30, so I don't know. I'm just not going to put it up now. Anyways, Memorial Day is happening, just remember the veterans, people who passed in service. And I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Council member Hubbard.
I knew you were going to call me next, no. Really fast, just a couple of things, cycle Chaska event is happening this Saturday. And registration is required, I didn't look to see if there was any openings in the registration, but I'm assuming there probably is. And so it's, I think from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. But it's over at the Lions Park, so there's more information on the Chaska website.
I expect that registration was required because that was put out before all the standards went away and it was more to make sure that we didn't go over capacity for events, I don't think there's a capacity limit on that.
Oh, yeah, in, in fact, I clicked on the link and there's plenty of openings, so, so, yeah, so. Should be a great day, I don't know what the weather forecast is looking like, I do the weather one hour at a time, but there you go, so grab your bike, grab your kids, have fun. And so that's that, and then kind of on the same line about bikes, just encouraging council members to their networks of people to fill out the survey and the WikiMap in regards to the the walk bike website, sorry, it's really late and I can't remember. Walk by that board, right? Yeah. You know, I don't know what the.
Told me last week that there was close to, well, and this was last Thursday or Friday, he said there was like 550 comments and like 90 WikiMap things, he really wants to bump up the WikiMap thing.
Yeah, I mean, I went on there last night. So I think that's a great tool, a great visual tool. So I just would encourage all of us to encourage others to fill that out as that can only help. Third, just Memorial Day is coming up.
Yeah, so we won't have it on Memorial Day, because that's Monday, it's the last day of the month, so it's fifth Monday. So next one will be on June 7th.
So, you know, just an aspect of that, just because we're not going to be there, just thanking everybody who has sacrificed and given their time to serve, so. And then fourth, just congratulating, I know we have a lot of retiring principals, staff and faculty with District 112 and so just want to congratulate all of the people retiring, giving them best wishes and then just also congratulating the people that are coming in to those positions and welcome them to the district, to the community, and that's all I have.
Council member Wong.
All right, let's see, so a couple of things, I just want to, you know, kind of give some shout outs for some high school students who like had some notable success. The first one, this one also made the newspaper, was Sidney Turner won the state speech titles, it was a big accomplishment. But in addition to that, we also had a few other stu, a couple of other students who also got some medals too, that at the 2021 State Workforce Development Event, Aiden Fisher won a gold medal for photography and Sitali Rodriguez won a gold medal for t-shirt design and a silver medal for pin design. So it's like some Chaska alum or future alum doing some great work out there. There's also, also as many of you know Nancy Whitman Belts from, from Jonathan Elementary is retiring. And on Wednesday, June 2nd, I'm mentioning it now because obviously the next meeting will be on the 7th. Wednesday, June 2nd, from 4:00 to 5:30, there will be a retirement drive-through for her, so she'll be out there waving to everyone, decorate your cars, drive by and and wish her a happy retirement and congratulations and surviving like 40 something years of elementary school kids, which is.
My principal when I was at Chaska. RIP Chaska.
He's at Jonathan?
She's at Jonathan, yeah. She's at Jonathan.
I was, and we're not going to talk about how long ago that was.
Forty some, 43 years, I think, like 23 of those years have been at Jonathan as a principal there, so, yeah, or something like that. But it was a lot of, it's like over 20 something years as a principal and a good chunk of those are at Jonathan, so, yeah.
Son Lincoln calls her WB Whitman Belts.
Yeah, so he calls, he calls her WB.
I can't, yeah, I can't remember, I was going to say, but I think she only had one of those last names when I was in elementary school. I can't remember, but it was a long time ago.
That's all I've got.
All right, Mr. Gra.
I will address the room, that's empty now. Just ever changing COVID, right? So, you know, I think it's, there's some reason for optimism as we continue to just kind of scale things down. It was comfortable and awkward to be in a room, this is probably the largest group of people I've been around with without a mask in a period of time, so that's kind of weird. I went home and saw my mom this weekend and we were all vaccinated in our house, my sister, and we all sat around the table ate. And my mom jokingly said, and it was kind of sad, but also true, that it served as like our Christmas, Easter, like meals, because we, we missed all that stuff, so, you know, I, I, again, I encourage those who have not been vaccinated to, you know, their walk-ins available, continue to push that, that percent. But just starting to feel a little bit normal again, which is strange, but we'll get there. And then I just wanted to just kind of, you know, extend my thoughts and prayers this last week. You know, a, a fire impacted a family in the, in the city and impacted, they have children in my, in my school district, so just, just thoughts and prayers with them, always a tough loss.
Pine Street.
Oh, 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 okay.
Just, just thinking of them, that's, I mean, I can't imagine, I just can't, and I, you know, I, we got the email from Carver's principal.
June?
John, yeah, Johnson. And, you know, you just, it's one of those moments where, you know, as a parent or as a person, you just realize that some of your day-to-day gripes are just stupid. Because you just stress about things and you think about things and you're, you get upset with a kid not listening and then you just, but then you, you hear a story like that and you're just like, I couldn't imagine that, right, to lose everything you own, just be thankful.
Ours are devastating.
Yeah, just be.
To see the aftermath.
What you have and, and then, you know, be kind and thoughts and prayers to that, to that impacted family.
That June Johnson, the principal showed up there and put, paid for their first night's stay in a hotel.
She, she was right, she was right there with the. She, she was, right, she was right there with the kids the entire.
She is literally one of the best humans I've ever met.
She really is. Privately, because I've thought the world, my kid, they've only been there now two years, and I thought the world of her.
She's too young to retire, isn't she? What do I know?
It's hope for all of us. She's, she's been in the school district a long time too, which means she started at a really young age too.
She's just age as well.
But, no, that's awesome. I did not know that. That's that's super cool too, and I appreciate that.
There's also a fund me page established for them too, so. People want to go on.
Just wanted to say that because we're all busy and sometimes there's perspective in life that needs to be looked at, so.
All right, you good? Thank you. Kevin. Luke. Nate. Matt. Couple of things that came out of Matt's biweekly I just want to touch on, I know it's late and probably nobody's listening. We have meetings the seventh and twenty-first. Oh, hi. Not often we have anybody here at this time. We have two, so June seventh and the twenty-first, and for up here, we have work sessions, five forty-five to seven prior to both.
Not that you'd want to do anything special on the twenty-first, but that is my birthday, just throwing that out there.
But you know, it's tradition at Chaska that you have to bring treats.
Have we approved the COVID protocol for sharing food? Is it needed to be individualized?
That's already passed. That ship sailed, bring it.
I'm certainly, I can certainly participate.
All right, I want to keep going because it's time to go. I just want to mention, again, I'm kind of reading Matt's thing here, the trail bridge connecting the the new underpass on forty-one, South of Target. Possibly be opened by middle June. Middle June, I think that's a big piece, that's, you know, it's kind of one of them, we put that tunnel in and then it sat there, so I'm happy to see that that is getting done. And they're actively working on that right now. If you haven't, drive drive by City Square gazebo. Our park, our our city crews removed the roof and re-roofed it with the wood shake, so it looks pretty awesome. That was a move up, the roof was not going to last much longer, so. The other thing I I do want to mention is starting June fourth, all of our city employees will be back to work. Fourteenth, what did I say? Fourth, sorry, fourteenth. Our E O C that we've had open since March ninth of twenty twenty will be holding its last meeting on June sixteenth. So we're going to close that down. Emergency orders, we're going to be formally removing them. First meeting in July, which will be Monday, June, July twelfth, and I'm sure that's due the Fourth of July holiday. So that would put us all, all commissions back in the council chambers then, from that point forward, so a little bit of normalcy coming back to the world. So that's exciting.
I'm putting plugins up on the bench, so people can actually.
They've been saying that for six months, but I told the right people this time, they listened.
Saying it for the whole time too.
Yeah, I know. I was saying it before before we left there.
Probably before.
Probably before you were here, yes. And lastly, I I do hope that people take the time on Memorial Day and attend the ser, the service to honor those that have lost their lives. I think it's very important. It's a short program generally, you'll be in and out of there in less than an hour. I hope that you do that, or at least take, make the effort to be at one of the cemeteries that the Honor Guard visits. And those should be in our local paper and probably on social media at times that that are there, so. I hope everyone takes a couple of minutes out of their day on on Memorial Day and to honor our veterans, so. With that, I'll ask for last call, otherwise, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, so I have a motion by council member Wong. Second by council member Hubbard to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, posed same sign. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for being here. We'll see June seventh.